...case. Are you able to upgrade her to?
So she's, uh, go to panel?
Matt, do you have any?
Yeah, she's carrying a multi, is she out there as an attendee?
Elizabeth Barrett may be the attendee.
Elizabeth Barrett's the attendee.
Here we go.
Okay, thank you.
Great, we got Liz.
Sorry.
So Liz, yes.
Do you have any more attendees?
No.
Remote.
Carrie's on her way, I think, correct?
No, she's in Zoom.
Carrie will be joining us via Zoom.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Um, Daniel Miles.
Here.
And Nick Dallin, right here. Great.
Okay, all right, can everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin with the acceptance of minutes. Can we have a motion to approve the August 22nd retreat minutes, which were slightly altered? And then the September 13th regular meeting minutes moved to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we have the public comment session. We'll just state the rules quickly. You need to give us your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. It is not a time when we discuss a topic. You can just present your three-minute, um, whatever, and then we will get back to the board at a later time. Do we have anyone who would like to participate in the public comment session? Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to participate in the public comment session?
It doesn't look like it.
It appears not. Okay, okay, well, thank you very much. Now we go to special presentations, and we will begin with the strategic planning. Margot, Zach. Zach?
So I'll just say broadly, as we talked about during our retreat, that the first step we are gonna take is to, before developing an RFP, to, um, to try to bring in a third party who would help us through our strategic planning process. I suggested that it was probably a good move for the board to hear from some, some respected vendors already, just to get a feel for, for kind of the scope of what's possible in terms of the strategic planning process and the different types of approaches that some vendors would take. So we reached out. Margot was unbelievably helpful in reaching out to several different groups. We have four that are here to talk to you tonight. Basically, what each of these groups has been told is that, you know, they've got eight to 10 minutes to kind of talk to you a little bit about, about their approach around this type of work, and then as many as five minutes to take some questions from all of you. I think the goal, again, remember, the goal is not to go necessarily super-duper deep on any one of these particular vendors, but to just give us a scope. That in turn would inform a conversation that we'd have after about what are some of the elements the board was most interested in or would want to have explored as part of an RFP process. So, um, so we do have folks tonight from several different groups that we listed in your packet. We're gonna shift around the order a little bit based on availability of when, some people had some short windows about when they were gonna be available. So we're gonna move Portrait of a Graduate, which is actually a program connected with the company Batel for Kids, up to the front of things, and our person that we have tonight is Jeff. Jeff, if I mispronounced your last name, I apologize. Kwanik Kinsky, who's the senior.
Kwanik Kinsky.
Thank you, Jeff. Senior Director for Strategic Engagement. And Jeff, I turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to share my screen, so bear with me here for a second. Make sure that you guys can all see it.
Can you all see if I stay here?
Okay, I'm gonna try and get it into the right mode here so you can see the full screen, so bear with me here.
Either way.
Um, do you see, are you seeing it in presentation mode, or are you just seeing it in, like, slides?
We can, we can see it from your perspective and not in presentation mode, yeah.
Okay, all right, let me, is that better?
Yes.
There you go.
Beautiful, beautiful. Well, thanks very much. Um, I'm actually just, so I've got about five to eight minutes is what I was, what I was told, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to not only talk to you today, but I'm out of town at our private event that we have for school districts that are working on, that are focusing on their Portrait of Graduates. Uh, so we've got about 600 educators from across the country that are in Houston this week for meetings. So I was able to break away from that, and I'm able to kind of share with you a little bit about why, why they're excited about the type of work that we do. Um, I think my goal, and what Margot had explained to me, was to talk a little bit about us, but then talk about what it is that we do, and how do we do it so that you can get a better sense and perspective of our approach? Uh, and then you'll hear from other organizations, and then you can really get a better feel for what's gonna make the most sense for yourselves in your open community. So that's my goal. Do I, will I then have about five minutes for Q and A after, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, terrific, okay. So with that said, uh, you know, brief overview, I'll talk about our approach. I'll just share a little bit of our timeline to see, and also get a sense of the timing associated with this, and then I'll open it up for Q and A. So a little bit about Batel for Kids. Uh, we're a nonprofit organization committed to collaborating with school systems around the country and communities to realize the power of promise of 21st century learning for every student. Uh, we are a nonprofit organization. We've been in the educate, we're exclusively in the education space, and we've been in place for over 20 years. So our organization continues to shift and evolve. However, a big focus of our effort and work has been on Portrait of a Graduate and strategic planning over the last eight, probably eight, nine years, okay? I'm gonna share with you our theory of action, and I meant, I show you this really for the purpose of helping you to understand that we work with school districts from a vision standpoint, and where we define the vision is looking at what is it that we want for our kids? What is it that we want, and the promise that we as a community want to deliver back to our parents with our kids going through our school system. So that's, in our opinion, is that vision work. The strategy is how we go about doing that. How do we, how do we develop plans and approaches to allow us to move the school district closer towards that vision? And then the practice component of it is really the implementation. It's, um, as you have developed these vision and the strategy, do you need additional assistance and support where we can provide some of that assistance to you? And this has been driven tremendously by other school systems who have said, hey, we've done this work, now we want to help bring this portrait to practice, and we're looking for some assistance. We're looking for some additional bandwidth. We're looking at scaling this across, and, and they're looking for our support in that manner. So we've developed some professional learning offerings that complement that work, so it becomes something that a school system can utilize if they so choose, or they can do this work themselves. But we want to be able to show that we're there for them, not only short-term, but also long-term. And then the acceleration piece is really our, that's, that's the network that we have. This is the, you know, 600 people here talking about this work, sharing how they've enacted this work, how they've taken this and liberated their teachers, increased student voice, and given, um, given really the system an opportunity to really shift and evolve and transform and ensure that they're preparing their students best for the future. I want to talk a little bit about deeper learning, and really, this is kind of the concept of where we approach this work. We look at deeper learning really as purposeful integration of rigorous academic content with experiences that intentionally cultivate mindsets and literacy's that are gonna best prepare our kids for the future. So we believe that when you embrace this approach of this deeper learning, students get engaged, teachers are engaged, it produces and it encourages greater results for our students and for our kids. So our approach, and these are kind of the bullets that I wanted just to hone in on so you have a additional perspective of the way we look at this work. So, um, strategic planning is the artifact of the Portrait of a Graduate, so it's not the other way around. We look at, looking at the vision, trying to identify what is it we want for our kids, and how can, and how can we work with the community in defining that? So to us, that helps to create that North Star. From that, we then look through that lens of our portrait and start to think, where are we as a school district in a school system? And not just one component, but looking at the entire school system, and start to identify and assess that to help us then determine, as we develop a strategic plan, that's gonna be a three-to-five-year view of that, and, and help move us closer to that direction. That starts to help us understand, if this vision is, you know, 13, 20 years, where are we today? How are we gonna get closer to that? And that's really the work of that strategic plan. Okay? So that's how we look at this work. That's not to say we don't work with school districts who don't believe in the Portrait of a Graduate. However, we have typically found that if they don't, um, have some variation of that or some component of that, that we're typically not as successful, or we don't typically see ourselves as aligned as well with that school system. Okay? Let me also kind of just talk a little bit about the strategic plan. So we go through the Portrait of the Graduate process, and that's usually about a four-month process. We engage the community, we have conversations with students, we incorporate the community into that process, and then we will then move towards our strategic planning process. And that's where we'll incorporate additional data. We'll also start to look at trends and the perception data from the portrait, but then also the data that you have to help us identify some of the key learnings and key areas of focus that we want to ensure that we're addressing through that strategic plan. So the journey is really greater than the end result, in the sense that we have found that when we do this portrait work first, we actually build a foundation of support with the community. So we, we look at this as an opportunity to listen. It gives the leadership team, it gives the, uh, the school administrators and, and principals kind of that leadership capital. So that they understand what are the parameters? What is it that our students want, our parents want, our business community wants? Um, and it starts to help them understand the why behind this work, which, when we go through that, we have found that we're significantly more successful when we do that. People then give us more, um, I guess, not would say freedom, but just more ability to then take the next step, and the next steps are a little bit easier. And that's typically how we've found the success of this work with the strategic plan is by building that foundation of support through the Portrait of a Graduate. It is very research-based, so we incorporate a lot of the, the changes that are happening in society to help people understand the why behind this work. We incorporate students into the process, but the other part is, we're not just asking for input, we're asking for the community being part of coming forward with a solution. The other piece is the, is actually the board involvement. So what we look at is when we go through this process, we want to ensure that the board is aligned with the school, which is aligned with the community. And so we'll actually have a design team concept, which we will incorporate, and I'll share a little bit about that. And that, or that concept is some, is a place where there can be board involvement, but we also have a two-part board approval process, both for the portrait and then also the strategic plan as well. So really, the, let me, I'll share, this is a slide that talks about that process, talks about how we talk about the why behind this work and build the foundation of support, how we then move towards people recognizing that really things have changed dramatically. A school 20, 30 years ago may not necessarily be the best way to, to work solely with our students to ensure that they're most ready and successful for the future. So ultimately, this is the process that we follow. We then go through, um, this is our community engagement process that, as you can see, this is taking a cross-section of the community, ensuring that they all have input, that they're heard. And again, this is, this is not a checkbook exercise where we already have it predetermined. We're actually going out to the community, and we're talking about this, and giving them an opportunity to voice their opinions. And also, it gives us an opportunity to start to understand the parameters around what that change might look like moving forward. So we get some, an idea around some of the guardrails, the pace of change, and really what ultimately is gonna be acceptable to the community and everybody at large. This is an example of what one of these design team meetings might look like. Okay, a lot of participation, kids at the tables, parents, business leaders, nonprofit organizations. Uh, that is, this is, this is the engagement aspect of the portrait piece. Finally, we'll talk a little bit about the typical timeline, and this just gives you a, a kind of a reflection of the timing. We, we like to make sure that people feel like they've been heard and they have an opportunity for input, so it's not all predetermined. So we look at about a three-to-four month process for the portrait. Um, it's the formulation, getting alignment, making sure that the design team is representative, that they understand the why behind the work, and then they're, what we're asking them to do is to be involved in coming forward with a recommendation that can go to the leadership team, and ultimately to the board for approval. Once that is done, then we'll go through about another four-month process through the strategic plan to do that analysis, to then ultimately come forward with, these are the specific tasks and strategies and milestones that we're gonna be focusing on over the next three-to-five years that's gonna help us get closer to that vision that we all agreed upon at the very beginning that is so important to us. So with that, um, I guess the last piece I would just talk about is, you know, we look at this and we want to ensure that this is equity-based, so that it includes, and it is not just for high school, it's not just for certain select students, it's for all of the students. So it's ensuring that this is, this is work that will be applicable to everybody, and everybody has an opportunity to be best prepared for the future. And the last piece is, this is not our plan, this is your plan. Our job is to facilitate the process and make sure you feel like you've been heard, feel like you've been part, and you feel really good about this. And it gives the educators the opportunity to then move forward and continue to move in the direction that the community and everybody has agreed upon. So with that, um, this is just an example of kind of that localization aspect of, this is Greater Rutland is, is an example in Vermont of a Portrait of a Graduate that was completed. But we work with school districts across the country. And then strategic planning, another example of just some of the work that we'll do there. And at this point, I'm gonna open up for questions.
Hope.
Hi, Jeff, thank you so much for, um, your presentation. So I just have a couple of quick questions. One, I'm wondering what metrics or benchmarks do you put in place to measure success against the strategy? Um, I, I, and I'm wondering if that's maybe looking at a little bit in your acceleration piece, if you're measuring there. Um, and then secondly, can you talk a little more about how you ensure your plan gets operationalized? So if we were to use you in implementation or not use you in implementation, how do you tie your strategy and plan back to operations? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. So, um, several districts will actually, um, I'm gonna kind of take these in reverse order.
Sure.
So, um, the, the question of our operationalizing, we, again, we look at this as, we want you to be responsible and own that plan. So as far as the development of that plan, we're gonna facilitate, we're gonna actually look at, create work streams, so there's going to be an opportunity for us to work with your team, to ensure that they understand the nuances of this work, the framework, we're gonna introduce a framework. We're gonna actually have your team do the writing of this by creating some different work streams, but we're gonna work with them and provide the tools and the support as we go through this, and I'll, and continue to be, um, ensuring that we're really looking at this from the right perspective, and we're taking our kind of a broad knowledge of, of some of the best practices that other school districts have implemented over the years that have brought some of those results. So that's a big fact, or a big portion of that. We'll vet, we'll then share information, we'll, we'll incorporate some of those best practices into this so that ultimately you own this. The milestones and timelines, et cetera, some school districts, what they've done is they've actually taken this, when they've developed that, um, strategic plan, it's kind of the three-to-five year. Some have then taken a snapshot and said, okay, we're not gonna worry about year two and year three, we're gonna worry about year one. So they take an operationalized view of that first year of the strategic plan, and they identify, this is exactly what we're gonna focus on, we're not focusing on anything else. These are the specific milestones and some of the specific metrics that we're going to expand upon to ensure that we have the proper level of bandwidth, we've got the proper level of resources, to ensure that we make the progress that we need in the first year. Then after the first year, they will review, they will compare back to the result, you know, the results back to what they had originally set up as milestones, and then they can pivot and adjust as necessary. But then they'll look at a year two, and then they'll look at a year three. And we find that that kind of aspect becomes extremely positive in a way to kind of break this down into chunk-sized pieces. The other aspect is we provide some additional learnings and opportunities where, by working with us, we'll share additional, you know, best practices and successes, which then gives you the opportunity to see what some other districts are doing and how they're working through this work. And, and I think that gives some of the educators an opportunity to see themselves in this work. So part of it is by incorporating that design team, having a broad design team that includes the educators, they see themselves developing this, they know that they own it. We then ensure that they are provided with the tools and the support, and we're also trying to tie back some of the professional learnings so that it's addressing, how can we ensure that they're gonna be successful moving forward? So that's one piece. The other piece as far as the metrics, and, um, we, you know, we've seen from some districts that they have, you know, there's an easy way to share how, are you hitting your numbers based off of, um, you know, some of the specific state standards, okay, and the testing scores, et cetera. However, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to say, if we can increase the engagement levels, so we'll look at things like engagement level with students. We'll look at opportunities of delinquency. We'll look at some of these other factors that allow people to then say, you know what, we're actually gaining more traction with our students by having them more engaged, more involved, and now we're starting to see some of the results with their test scores. So it's, it's kind of a byproduct, a little bit of shifting of not just focusing on the test scores exclusively, but looking at other ways that can ultimately allow you to get to the results that you need in order to ensure that, you know, you, you adhere to some of the state standards.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Brian?
Yeah, just where are you guys physically located? Like, how far you are away, and how would boots on the ground work? How often would you be here?
Yep.
Um, so, uh, we are, I mean, we're a national, we're, we're located in Columbus, Ohio. However, we have individuals and people that live in various different states. So we have engagement teams that are working with school districts around this work. Typically, what will happen is, if you, if you choose to work with us, we will have an in-person discussion around when, the timing, how we put together the team. We would have an engagement lead, uh, and this is an individual who's worked in school districts, worked in, uh, you know, as building leaders, and they will, they have worked with school districts around the country on this type of work. So they will be engaged with you, we'll have a project manager that will work with them as well. We can work with you both in a in-person capacity, where we would actually travel to your district, we would conduct these meetings, we would work with you, facilitate you through this process, or we can do it virtually. Uh, we've, we've got the ability to do both ways, um, and what, we're flexible, whatever makes the most sense for your school district. We have a, we've worked, we've worked with some school districts in New Hampshire, we've done work in, you know, that whole area in Vermont and Massachusetts. And I was actually talking to a district in Neshoba, Massachusetts, who's here at our event. We just helped them with some of their Portrait of Graduate work. Uh, and they've done Portrait of an Educator, and they're part of our, our network. So they're here gaining added knowledge and, and experiences. So, um, our, we have several professional learning series that are done virtually, so we will have homework set up, and then we also have in-person ones as well. So we, we offer a variety of different options for you, depending on what makes the most sense.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question?
Nancy, I have a question.
Okay, Liz, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I just, um, I wanted to follow up, um, there is the, I understand, you know, different companies do different things. However, I guess I'm wondering, within your company, are there different package levels, I guess, so to speak, of what is available and what is offered? And, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk any sort of comps or anything at this time, but as far as, um, package levels and.
Yes.
Time-wise, and then also, you know, is there some sort of waitlist as far as however many districts you're working with? Um, as far as, you know, moving forward with something like this?
Like lead time? Sure, yeah, great questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so, yeah, we offer, we offer some different ways in which we can engage with you. So we have, with our Portrait of a Graduate, for instance, um, we have some districts that say, we want you to fully facilitate, we want to use this as an opportunity to listen, to learn, to be part of the process so that we could hear and not worry about having to manage the meetings, the content, and, and kind of take the community through this process. Uh, but then there's other districts that say, you know what, we want to do some of that, but we'd like a little bit of your support. So we have offered a model where we can do coaching support, where we'll run some of the meetings, but then some of the meetings we won't attend, but we'll coach the individual from your team on preparing them for that meeting, we'll meet with them after, and we have discussions and support them that way. Then there's the other end of the spectrum, as a nonprofit organization, you could do all of this work yourself. And we have some tools and information that's available on our website, where you can take that information and you could actually go forward and utilize some of this information. Um, and, and I can kind of share with you a little bit about how that works, but, I mean, literally, there's no charge associated with that. However, we're not likely to be engaged by having people coming out to your district and working with you in that capacity. So that's kind of how that part works. As far as the, uh, like, other professional learnings go down, that we offer, again, different kinds of packages and offerings as well, depending on what makes the most sense. So, you know, we have experience working with rural districts, suburban, urban districts. Um, we recognize that, you know, it's not one exact same cookie cutter approach for each district, everyone's unique. Um, so we offer a variety of different flexible options, and, uh, and we're, and in some cases, we work with some districts where we come in and we just fully customize a whole, unique approach with them. Um, and that's something that they, you know, specifically are looking for because they can't get it anywhere else.
And then the, um, and then the lead time, as far as.
Oh, lead time, yes, great question, yes. Um, it's usually about a month, approximately. So if, if you said, hey, let's go forward, uh, once we have the paperwork signed, uh, it's usually about a month for us to kick off. And that gives, that's enough logistic time to get the leadership team together so that we can have a meeting with them, get everybody aligned, making sure, answer all the questions, start to talk about the design team and the formation of that. Uh, so there's certain specific things we want to do, and then the next meeting would be that first design team kickoff meeting with the community. Uh, so, yeah, it's usually about a month, approximately, uh, and we're very flexible. We've had some districts where they say, we want to start in October, and then something comes up, and suddenly they say, hey, can we move it to January? And we're like, yes, not a problem.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeff. We appreciate you taking the time to be with us tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, and if there's any questions down the road, by all means ask, and, uh, again, good luck with the process.
Great, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
So next, um, and we'll go back in the room since we have someone who's here with us. Um, so, um, it's Dana?
Yes.
Dana Britt, uh, from Education Elements.
How are we gonna get that up there? I have a bit, a short link I can send you.
Do you have your laptop?
Yes, I do.
So.
I could hook that way.
I think the best way to do is to go inside and just.
Oh, yeah, through Zoom.
Yep.
Yeah, sounds good.
Can I ask Zach a quick question?
Yes, of course.
Um, I guess I just wanted to understand, because I think it's great that we're hearing about all these different things, but I guess I'm concerned and wondering, when it would be appropriate to understand, like, price points? And what, um, like, for example, like, if we got the full package with the, with, um, the gentleman that just presented, feeding everything, you know, what would be looking at at cost? Because I think it would be good to understand, you know, what's the difference between X and Y, so to speak? And, um, and so I guess I'm just curious if now is the appropriate time? Or if there's, you know, if there's a discussion that we could have at a later date?
Yes.
After we do this, um, to. we do this, to look at numbers from these companies, just to get an understanding, because I think it's great to understand what we want, but I also think we need to have an understanding of what the cost is like as well.
Sure, I think, I think, I think you're free to ask those questions, Liz, tonight, if you want, and folks can decide what, to what extent, you know, they want to. I think what's difficult is, in a lot of these operations, they're going to tailor what, there's like, there's like, what kind of core work that they do, and then a lot of it is customizing to particular operations. So I think what would probably end up happening is, you can ask, and folks might give you a broad range, but I know with, with, with all these guys, they're probably hesitant to give a range that's not more closely connected to what the solution is they're proposing based on what we want. So I think what would happen is, it's really going to be, the RFP group would have to do a little bit of additional research to try to think about what that range might look like, and then, of course, the RFP group would then be coming back to the board with a proposed, with a proposed draft RFP, which would probably, which would include a range based on the additional reach out that they do.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you so much.
Yep.
You see Carrie has a hand up.
Carrie?
I just wanted to just frame, based on that question, that this is really to understand sort of the different approaches on a broad level. For what we, what will go into that RFP, and then the price point is going to be part of that proposal, based on what we say we want and what we need. That's really where the quotes are going to be important, in my mind.
That's exactly right, Carrie, that's the, that's the, what we're thinking in terms of a process.
Thank you, Carrie.
Do you want us to go to the next group and come back?
I'm ready.
Oh, she's ready. Dana is ready.
Where's good to stand?
Right over there, you have a microphone, so, yep.
Oh, perfect, all right. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Dana.
My name is Dana Britt, and I'm here representing Education Elements.
Anyway, I was going to have to look this way, guys.
Yep.
Dana, where are you, out of?
I'm out of Pasadena, Maryland, which is, if you're not familiar, halfway in between Baltimore and Annapolis on the Chesapeake Bay. But our organization is, is actually, as of COVID, not based anywhere. We do not any longer have a physical address, but we are all over the country. So first, I wanted to tell you a little bit more about our organization, and then I'm going to speak more about our approach to strategic planning, and then share a little bit about what I think that you all, as a board, should be thinking about at this point in your strategic planning journey. So, hello, we are Education Elements. We are a national education consulting organization. We have supported over a million students across the country, over 1,700 schools and 320 districts, and I have the pleasure of being here in person, because I'll be going to Rochester tomorrow to support one of our districts. So a couple of local districts around, Bedford is another one that I support as well. We believe that schools grow when people grow. We have 12 years of experience, and something that is special about us is that 90% of our work comes from repeat clients. So year over year, our districts continue to work with us. With Rochester, this is their seventh year, actually, that they've been partnering with us to support their personalized learning. And another thing that's really important, I think, when you're thinking about a partner for strategic planning, which has not yet showed up on the screen, oh, thank you, you're following along with me, is that we do support our districts in a variety of different ways. So we do strategic planning, but we also, we're really known for instructional design and implementation. We were some of the founders of the first blended and personalized learning models back in 2010, and so that's where most of our districts know us, and over the years, our districts said, hey, do you support with strategic planning? Do you support with leadership development? Do you support with data collection and surveys? We really like working with you, we'd like to continue that. And I know that personally, because I was actually a client of Education Elements. I am a former high school ELA educator, and then worked in the district office in DC public schools. And so I worked with Education Elements as a client in 2012, and I joined the organization in 2015, so I've been supporting our districts for the past seven years. Thanks, Matt, you're doing great. So here's a little bit more about our approach. I wanted to share a bit about what we believe strategic planning is, first. We believe that strategic planning is looking deeply at who you are as a district, what you aspire to do, and how you aspire to do it, and then, once you've done that, co-creating with your community a path forward that lives in both internal and external documents and systems. And really, why we do that is to build community-wide focus and alignment about why we do what we do and what matters to us. So I think that's important to really, as I think you all have started to talk about, why are you doing strategic planning? Why are you going to invest this time and energy and resource into doing strategic planning and agreeing as a board and agreeing as a district if this is the right approach for you and what strategic planning looks like for you? I really like that you all are doing this approach to it. Not many of our districts, our partner districts, have us present before you've even gotten the RFP out, so I can tell that you're already very strategic thinkers as a group. So with the next slide here, I wanted to, I believe that all sessions, even if it's an eight-minute session, should have a little bit of new learning and a little bit of reflection and connection, so, and this speaks to what we believe about strategic planning. I want to get you to have a guess about, when you think about teams and how teams work together, what factor do you think contributes most to a team's success? Would any of you be willing to share?
Communication.
Okay, communication.
Trust.
Trust, okay. Anybody else?
Collaboration.
Please, on Elizabeth.
I was saying like an agenda or an outline for discussion.
Okay. If we had more time, I would, let us go through this video, it's linked in my presentation here, but actually, Google did a study of all of its teams across the world to try to find out the teams that were really successful and the teams that just rose above the rest, what was that factor? And this goes along with some research that Amy Edmondson has been doing at Harvard as well, to say that the thing, well, let's not click on the video, these are the top five elements on this next slide that Google found in their study, and one of you said trust, so trust is embedded into this number one here. Psychological safety, if you've heard of this term. What they found is that who is on a team matters less, so it doesn't matter how long, how much experience the team has, it doesn't matter their background, it doesn't matter if they know each other, if they like each other, it's just about that psychological safety and how they treat each other and how they interact on that team. So I think that collaboration piece really goes well to that as well. And so on the next slide here, this gives you the definition of psychological safety. As I mentioned, Amy Edmondson is kind of the leading expert on this, but it's the belief that one will not be punished or humiliated for speaking up with ideas, questions, concerns, or mistakes. And I brought this to share, that I think that psychological safety is one of the key pieces of strategic planning, and that as you are thinking about what type of process you want to engage in and what partner you want to engage in, that thinking through the psychological safety piece is so important, and that the organization has this belief and is, the way that they build their meetings, if they have interaction, if they have engagement, if they make the community members feel consulted and included, if they are fully a part of, we have multiple teams in our, the way that we approach the work, so there's not just one team, but I'll speak more to that in a moment, but just having lots of different opportunities for that psychological safety and building trust between the district, the board, and the community, which in today's day and age is something that I know that we all want to continue to do. So what we believe in, we call our strategic planning responsive planning, because we believe that developing a plan that prioritizes process over product, we don't want a shiny, beautiful plan that goes on the website and then gets dusty, or gets printed out and put onto the shelf. We want something that's going to be able to pivot, so we do create a final deliverable that we're really proud of the way that they look, but we also have dynamic documents through different dashboards and Excel spreadsheets, all sorts of ways that we can keep up with what's going on currently with, as I mentioned, so many different teams that we engage in the process. Next, to share you a little bit more about the way these teams and the feedback loop that we create, so one team that we have is called the project team. This team meets weekly or bi-weekly with us. They, we often have a board member on this team, but it's usually the superintendent or a district leader, maybe a board member, maybe another admin within the district, and they're helping make all of the logistical decisions, just really running the day-to-day process with us. We have a steering team, that's about 20-ish folks, we have staff members, other community members, students, family members, all of those district team members, school leaders, would join our steering team, and as you can tell by the name, they're steering the process. We then have, once the steering team has come to mission, vision, values, and focus areas, we have what we call planning teams. So if I'm a community member and I am really excited about workforce preparedness, and that ends up being one of the focus areas, I might not join the steering team, but I could join a planning team on workforce preparedness and move that work forward. And then the last team, if you're a community member and you don't feel like you have the opportunity to join one of these teams that takes more of a time commitment, we have advisors who receive frequent email updates and have different virtual touchpoints where they can hear what's going on with the work, they can give their thoughts, here's what I think about workforce preparedness, here's what I would like to see. So we find that this feedback loop works really effectively to be able to have a variety of different community members who are taken along through the process with us throughout it, which lasts about six to nine months, we find, with our process. And we believe that your plan should represent your community identity, you won't find any cookie cutter plans that we really want to make sure that, and processes, we have a standard methodology, and we have two different approaches that we can take based on the capacity of the district and the resources, and I'll share a little bit more about that at the end as well, because I heard that that was something that you all were interested in. And the next slide gives you a little bit of, this is something that maybe you all could print out and talk in one of your next board meetings, to think about what you are hoping to have in your plan, what it answers, the level of specificity, and other names for it that you might hear. So some districts choose to have a portrait of a graduate or a profile of a graduate. Some districts say that's not part of our, our identity, that's not something that we're going to engage in, we'd like to focus on this other piece instead. But we like to talk with the district at the beginning to say, which of these elements are you hoping, hoping to have in your plan? And then in practice, I'll go quickly through this to leave time for questions, but we have four phases of our process, and each phase takes roughly about one to two months, which gets you to about the six to nine months there, depending on how fast or more measured the district wants to be. So the plan and align phase is where you are forming the teams, where you're creating the timeline, this is where a board member might start to get involved, and starting to just think about what community engagement might look like. The next phase, foundations, is when we really start to get into the community, we form that steering team, we start to get feedback, we might shadow a student with the steering team, we might do surveys, we might do focus groups. So taking that, looking at that information, bringing in other data sources that are important to you, and forming that mission, vision, and values, those are the key elements of the foundations phase. Then in the design phase, this is my favorite phase, it's so much fun to get out with the community and to really think big. We use design thinking, we like to get really excited about our brainstorming, so if this is our vision, what are the wild ideas that you have about how it could be accomplished? No idea is too big, because there might be a kernel within that that we can use, that we can bring back down to reality. And then we have different tools where we help our teams to take their ideas and put them into what we call planning canvases, which ultimately become the strategic plan. And then the last phase, launch, is, well, it's another fun phase, because getting to get it out with the community, sharing the final external-facing document like this, we often, some districts will share a dashboard or another more dynamic document in addition to the static document, to make sure that it's constantly being updated as well. And then, many, most of our districts choose to continue to work with us in the first year of their implementation, and as I shared, because we have background in so many different areas, so for example, if engaged learners is one of their focus areas, we're able to help them with personalized learning, or if they decide that their leadership team really needs to go through some development, we might be able to help them with that development as well. This next slide is a sample timeline, just to see the big pieces, the community engagement, that's the most fun part. Well, I guess they're all fun to me. And the last slide here is the two potential approaches that I mentioned. A more comprehensive approach where we are facilitating the majority versus a more, where the district is able, but both have support from us, that you can dig deeper into this. You can see on the left, again, when you're talking to different providers, these are some of the things on the left that you need to decide, do I want to own this, or do I want the provider to own this, as you're making that decision? And then, very last, I lied, there's one more. So the things that I want you to start to discuss are here, you know, how will you all be involved in this process? How will you engage the community? What data do you want to review? Do you want a mission, vision, and values, or do you want that portrait of a graduate? How much capacity, do you have to run it? How will you create that feedback loop along the way? And I should have had on here, but I didn't, how will, at every engagement, how will we build that psychological safety and ensure that that is a key element of the process? And the last thing that we won't do now, but there is a video of one of our partner districts talking about our process and what they value in it, so if you'd like to take a look at that another time. Thank you all again for letting me nerd out about strategic planning.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Dana? Anyone?
Yes.
I'm interested to know, in your shared deliverables, how do you work with our internal team if those deliverables are shared, when you say we would also own it?
Yeah. So that, when you think about that feedback loop, that's usually with the project team, so we would be having those bi-weekly meetings with them and talking through which of the elements that they're going to work towards versus the ones that we're going to work towards.
Okay, and then I saw on your launch, so you have a one-year communication strategy built into that, that's automatic.
Yes, so we, we want to make sure that if you work with us or you don't work with us through the next year, that you have all of the resources that you need, so we create kind of a home base that has examples of how other districts have launched their plan, videos that they've made, swag that they've done, other ways that you can get the, do a road show, bringing the plan to the different schools, or having community nights to have them come in and to see the plan and to celebrate it.
And the companies that you're currently, or the school districts you're currently working with for ongoing implementation work, is that on a retainer that you're working with them, or are you doing that pricing out by deliverables?
We, we usually do a one-school-year approach, so for one school year, we would do the strategic planning work, and then for the next school year, we would do an implementation support, which would involve some of the, working with the project team and the steering teams to look at impact, to measure effectiveness, and then usually some form of implementation support around one of the, one or more of the key pillars that you all have selected.
And are all your team members educational background, or you said there's a mix, so are you coming from other industries?
Oh, we are all former educators, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That is one thing that I'm proud of for our, our group.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Nancy. On the, you had mentioned that strategic planning wasn't sort of the initial thing, is that the big thing you do now? Because you talked about leadership and all these different pieces that you're doing.
I would say that we start, personalized learning is the way that we support the majority. majority of our districts. So I think we're working with currently about a hundred districts, and I would say that maybe thirty or forty of them are in personalized learning. And then our strategic planning is about ten to twenty at this point. I'd have to check the actual numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Dana, did you say that, let's say, one of the measurable objectives we come out with is one that another district you're working with comes out with? Did you say that you often connect those two to be learning communities for each other? Is that?
Yes, that's really important to us as well, to be able to share with our districts what many of them will have, we find similar focus areas. Not that we, that's the way that our process ends up, but that in strategic plans, there are often some key things that overlap. So being able to connect you all with one of our partner districts in the region or across the country to hear what they're trying to implement, how their process is going, how they're engaging their community, how they're building psychological safety, is really important to us.
Thank you.
And what are you looking at for your benchmarks and measurements?
We, we've acquired recently tripod education partners, which is a nationally-known survey provider that comes out of Harvard, Ron Ferguson, and that is one that has different metrics, but often it's student engagement, there's a community survey, there's a teacher-based survey as well, there's a diversity, equity, and inclusion-based survey. So what matters most is the implementation fidelity, the effectiveness of that implementation, and then the impact. So first, with the key initiatives that you come up with, how is the implementation going? Are you doing what you said you were going to do? Effectiveness would then be, are the things that you said you were going to do, are they actually working? Are they getting the results that you're hoping that they would? And then impact is, you're doing, you're trying those things, they may be working, but are they actually reaching students and getting those student outcomes, which is what I was speaking to about the, the student survey tool there. But as you're building your implementation dashboard, those are the three areas that we're going to be building with you, so that you're checking on a periodic basis on all three of those.
With a ninety percent plus repeat rate of customers, what results are they seeing?
I think that they're seeing great results of, I'd be happy to send you any.
I just was wondering, like, do you have anything off the top of the cusp of like what you're really seeing?
Not off the top of my head of, of what their impact data, effectiveness data, and feeling the increased buy-in that they're getting from their community and being able to take this process and replicate it with their community. I think being able to, I'd be happy to give any references of, of our districts about the process, but no, that's a good one, I should definitely get that.
Okay, thank you.
Liz, do you have a question? And then Lisa.
I do, thank you. I guess, I guess I was curious, you said that there's other options other than this portrait of a graduate view, I mean, this is all new to me. So I guess I was curious if you could talk more about what other options, the side portrait of a graduate that your districts have gone in? And you also talked about this being a working document, so I guess I was curious, huh?
I think I got the question.
Yep.
So a portrait of a graduate is going to give you, is going to give you the, the learner that you are hoping to graduate. And oftentimes, that's going to be your twelfth grader. Some districts will do different grade bands. They'll say, what are, what are the skills, the habits, the attributes that I want my learner to have at the end of twelfth grade, when they leave us at the end of eighth grade, at the end of fifth grade, at the end of third grade? So that is something that you could decide that you'd like to work on, that we do support our districts and have examples. That is something that does take time and energy, and often we have districts that say, we create a mission, vision, and values, and we'd like to just go forward with that. We don't feel that we need to necessarily align right now on this, this journey through our school system. We know that what we're doing here at our alternative high school might be a little bit different than what we have going on here. So that's not necessarily the way that they end up going, because that does take your time and your resources to go in that direction. So we have some who do and some who don't.
Lisa? I have a quick follow-up on the benchmarks question, but I'm curious if we have you for a year under a contract, how we're measuring over time? You know, if we set the right goal, did we get the right result? Does it align back to whatever our original purpose was for setting it? I mean, do you leave us with sort of a dashboard that has built-in tools that we can then assess how we're doing over the next two years or three years? Or do we have to continue to work with you?
If you say, I want, one of our focus areas is our community engagement, our community doesn't feel engaged. So we say we're going to, an implementation metric is how many community nights we hold, or how many visits, how many times we let the community visit our schools. So that's something that you could track in your dashboard, are we doing that? Effectiveness would be, at those events, are, maybe you have a, a three-question survey to your people who come, did you enjoy this? Do you feel like you were able to engage with our school today? And then impact would be a yearly survey, usually that is going to get you, how do you feel about the culture of our district? Do you feel welcomed? Do you feel belonging at our school or at our district? And asking the students as well. So that's kind of how that implementation fidelity would work.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well Dana, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Enjoy your time in Portsmouth.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, next.
All right, so next, we have, I listed it as, as Heron Consulting, but it's, it's actually student education, which is part of Heron Consulting. And we have two gentlemen with us tonight, Ryan Hess and Michael Proudy. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thanks so much. Thank you all for the opportunity to be with you today. I've been looking forward to the time together, and like others, I'll share slides related to potential ways the work could move forward if we have the opportunity to, if I were to do it that way. And our organization, Heron Student Education, works with about a hundred and thirty different school districts across the country currently, and primarily in this area, strategic planning and then also implementation processes. We've been engaged in this work for, as, as a larger organization, over twenty years. Like many others that you've heard from, our experts have deep rich background in, as educators and in education leadership, and then also with strategic planning and also the implementation processes too. We serve school districts in a variety of ways, and, and you see them here on this continuum, a depth of expertise everywhere from teacher preparation certification to on the right, the areas that we'll talk about, really strategic planning, as you see kind of in the center of, of that right side section. And then also informed by feedback processes, surveys as part of that. And then many of the districts that we work with, in fact, most of them continue with this in implementation, which you see represented there by that organizational excellence model and approach. And so also in time, really kind of on the right side in this area, and of course, taking questions from you all. One of the things that, that I think positions us particularly well with being a good strategic planning partner, is most of the time, we're a partner in implementation. So I mentioned there's about a hundred and thirty different school districts and some higher ed institutions that we currently serve in this way. The vast majority of those are, are not just strategic planning, but, but actually, we're, like I mentioned, a partner in the implementation approach. The work that we do is evidence and research-based, and we also have a model in terms of implementation that at a high level is represented here with this evidence-based leadership framework. So what you see on the left side of the framework is really that grounding in your strategic priorities and goals, as you're talking about dealing with the strategic planning process. But even that process aside, I know right now, you're grounding into a school year, having conversations around what does success look like, how we know if we get there, what does it look like measurably and clearly, so we can communicate that well across the system and achieve the results that are most important for those that we serve. And so that's the context where we're operating with districts and is a good partner and with great expertise in that area. And so when we're a partner in facilitating the strategic planning process, we're naturally thinking about how to operationalize and implement it, because that's, that's, that's the bulk of what we do day in and day out. In the center of the framework, you really see people represented there, developing leaders to develop people in alignment with what's most important for you and what you've identified in the strategic plan to achieve, really advancing and moving the whole system forward. And we recognize that school systems are, are really complex, and so having a system to advance the system, and I could be repetitive in that way, we found that it is really key and important to do. Lastly, on the right, you see this idea of accelerators or initiatives, or, you know, the things that we're going to put in place to help us, you know, really go to the next level. And that really is intentionally on the right, because sometimes what we found, in, in my own personal experience previously in school districts, and it wasn't out of intent, and sometimes what we found is, if we're not careful, our goal statements or our strategic plan can be kind of a laundry list of a lot of actions and things that we'll do, without starting first on how will we know if we're successful? And so this is intentionally meant to say, what will success look like and how will we know? We want to develop our people as the priority. And then really, as few, as few so-called initiatives as possible at any given time, over a period of five years, there'd be a lot of things that you put in place, but trying to be very strategic. You know, knowing that a lot of times in education, people can feel like there's a little bit of an, an initiative overload or fatigue in the system, which can really kind of hurt engagement and can have the opposite effect of what we want as we move our districts forward. So again, being really key with the work, being highly strategic, and then being a good partner in terms of staging that in that implementation process. What you see represented here are just, you know, some key components of those strategic plans. These can be, you know, rebranded or renamed in different ways, but I think what's most significant is that we're really working to ensure the alignment between these components. You may already have certain things in place that you want to see represented in your final strategic plan. And so part of what we do is really just on the front and understand and learn that from you. So for example, some districts have a mission statement that really resonates with people, people know it very well, it's, it's current and drives to work, and they say, you know, the, the mission statement is, is going to stay the same, and, and if they don't, we'll talk to them like that, so we'll move forward in that way. Other times people say, gosh, I don't even know what our mission statement is, or when it was last updated, or it's kind of long, and, you know, we, we like to re, redevelop it and make sure it resonates. Or, you know, less than people might just want to do a check on it. And here's our current mission and vision, does this still resonate with people, or should we tweak it as part of the process? But we'll have that conversation with you all to be aligned in terms of what is, what things are existing that you want to make sure that you honor? What things do you want to redevelop anew? And it can be all redeveloped anew as well. But either way, really that sense of core purpose for the school district in terms of that mission statement and your service to the community and stakeholders. This idea of a vision, which doesn't have to be this way, but we kind of like to challenge people to think about that vision as, what will success look like at the end of the implementation of the strategic plan? So if it's a three-year plan, a five-year plan, you know, be visionary, but a little time-bound and that nature to help aim for us. Core values and beliefs, developing those or updating those are often a part of the process, which really helps us from a cultural perspective. What does it look like the Portsmouth way to really live and serve and teach and work? And, and Portsmouth, in alignment with the values and beliefs that we've identified are important to the community we serve and to ourselves. And then of course, the goals and strategies that are really going to be key to moving the work forward. In terms of the actual process, we don't bring, you know, like a one-size-fits-all approach to this. As you'll see kind of on the left side, this customization and refinement of the process is one of the things that we always do early on, to make sure that we're aligned with your timeline, your expectations, the level of community engagement, the depth of that, and bringing all of those things together. And so rather than it being a formulated process that we impose, you know, kind of on you, we, we really work to make sure that we understand your priorities. And then we have significant experience in doing this, and, and resources and tools and best practices, and we build those designed around you, rather than designing you around kind of our way of doing things. So a few things that I'll just call out from a process perspective. The, the board's role, of course, is, is highly significant to this work. We often will treat the board almost like its own focus group, or even have one-on-one interviews with the board members to make sure that we really understand your perspectives and, and the stakeholders and constituents that you represent, because we know that you're in the role you're in, because of your ear to the ground in terms of the community and your connection to, to your, your stakeholders in that way. We'll form a steering committee, work with you all on that. The steering committee is, is a representative group, and it looks different in different districts. We don't really see a one right way to do that, but in the conversations with you early on, we'll help you all make the best decisions about who's, who's best situated to be on the steering committee. In short, the, the steering committee isn't the only group that provides input. In fact, we'll have input very broadly throughout the community, but rather that steering committee is, is a group of, you know, highly invested people who have the ability to meet multiple times throughout the process, to, to hear the feedback that we're collecting through surveys and focus groups and town hall type sessions, to, to then begin to design and input the draft components of a plan development. So focus groups, surveys, town hall forums are some key ways that we get input really broadly within that process, and typically do that fairly early on in the process. And then again, we own the lift, it's a heavy lift throughout the process that we don't want you to feel as, as a heavy lift to you. So we're very full-service in the work that we do, and we know that each of you have significant roles and responsibilities and day jobs, whether it's in the district or otherwise, in addition to your responsibilities on the board, for example. And that your voice in providing the leadership and insight and direction is really important, as opposed to, you know, you having a new job as, you know, facilitator, facilitator of focus groups or, or those kinds of things. We understand that that's, that's the expectation our clients have of us in terms of that lift. So, so we do all of the analysis, how, of all of the ways that that data is collected that I mentioned, we do the heavy lift on that, come back and present that back to the steering committee, and work with you all to begin to develop draft components of the strategic plan. Then when we get to a point where we've got some solid drafts, we like to go back to the community again and message back and say, you know, thank you for those of you, whether it was completing one of the earlier surveys or participating in a focus group or town hall, for your input into the process. Based on the feedback we've gotten so far, here are the draft core components of the strategic plan that, that we put together. But before the board considers this for finalization and adoption, we want to hear from you all one last time to make sure we're getting that right. So again, we're opening up a process for feedback back to the community at large to provide that input. We own the analysis of the data, we come back to the steering committee, any, any changes that, that may need to be made based on the feedback, we facilitate that process. And then also work with you all in that final adoption, presentation to the board and adoption process. So that, that's some of the big picture pieces. And I've also put together just a simple timeline, and, you know, I spent a little time, you know, learning as much as I could from you all, and was able to connect then, get to know a little bit from some of your recent sessions as well, that were just publicly available. So I think I have a schedule, I don't know the exact timeline, but, but I think I, I doubt that you're willing to have it done by the end of this year, and time delivers the planning into next school report. And so again, this is just an example, we would, we would design and finalize the timeline with you, but I, I wanted to share, and this is the same information on that past slide, just laid out over time in a particular way of, of how it could be sequenced with you all. But, but again, we would make that decision together. I wanted to share just some examples of some components of strategic plans that we've worked with. worked with from, from other districts, just to give some visuals here. This is a Kentucky school district, Meade County Schools. You see their mission, guiding values, they've identified four priority areas. This is kind of the plan on the page version of it. I've, I've just taken some snippets of some different plans. And, and some key initiatives that they identified or key strategies that they identified aligned to those, those priority areas in those eight months. This, this is one of the districts that I mentioned that we are also working with in the implementation process. And so you can see as part of their actual strategic plan, they even put this visual together to, to assure the community, like, this wasn't just a really great planning process, but we also have an eye towards how we're going to implement to make sure that we're honoring your input. And the work we do to realize results that are most important based on, you know, the feedback you provided us. So we, we leverage a balanced organizational scorecard or a strategic scorecard process. I'll share a little bit more about that in just a moment, but as a way to annualize and deploy and implement the strategic plan. So that strategic plan will be multi-years, that should, should be envisioned and scoped. And that scorecard process really helps us say, what does success look like for this first year? And, and how will we action plan, communicate and implement related to that? So, so you see a little bit of that on this visual. This is another district, California School District. They identified four pillar or priority areas as part of their strategic plan, aligned with their mission and vision. We also do this work in higher education. So this is the University of West Georgia. Their strategic plan, excerpts from that process, some summaries of the engagement process, their three strategic priority areas, relevance, competitiveness and placemaking were theirs. Just keep in mind, you know, higher ed is a, a, a little bit of, I, I think, I think we all are an education aware, some changes going on, but higher ed's been just bluntly facing some really significant disruptions to, to people kind of questioning the traditional value proposition. And so they have an eye towards that. They're wanting to make sure that they're highly relevant in the way that they're serving students in the future. So that's a little bit of the lens that you see, that you see from their strategic plan and their thinking in that way. We're also working with them through the implementation process. Shobin Kimley Schools, another school district, this is just again, a piece of it. The core values that they develop as part of their overarching plan, which I really highly recommend as part of this process, because you'll want to move into deploying towards achieving those strategic results, and you'll also want to be culture building alongside that. And so this core values or core beliefs process alongside, it is really significant. And then, you know, lastly, by way of just examples and excerpts, this is Point Park University, they're in the Pittsburgh area, a private institu-, institution in downtown Pittsburgh. We're doing the process within NAMM. So of course we're, you know, communicating well with them around communications. So they've got a webpage up right now that is a way of how they're constantly communicating back with the community in terms of process, timeline, ways to be involved. And so those are the kinds of things that we do as well. I'll also mention Fortune graduate has come up some, some too. That doesn't have to be part of your process, it can be. We, we do that with high frequency as well. So all of those things can be part of a conversation of, you know, what's most significant for you all in terms of the process and then that final product. So kind of summarizing here a little bit, we have expertise beyond just strategic planning, but of course we wanted to focus on that. And then most of the time, we're an implementation partner in that way too. Many of our partners that we work with in implementation have been nationally, nationally spotlighted. And in fact, as, as recently as last month, AESA School Administrator Magazine, a couple of the districts we serve were highlighted. This was a 2021 edition that you see pictured here for the different school districts that we work with, and this edition focused on district-wide organizational excellence were featured. And this is, this is the superintendent, National Superintendent Association's publication, School Administrator. In 2019, there was an edition around district-wide continuous improvement. The majority of the articles throughout this edition actually happened to, to feature different school districts across the country who have just gained not only state but national renown related to the outcomes that they're seeing based on the work that, that they're doing. And we're just proud to have been a partner with them in that way. So briefly speaking to the implementation component, because, because I know that the planning process is important, the plan is important, and then the results really come, you know, with that implementation approach. That, that's what we're, we're very well known for in terms of what I've been speaking to of, of the partners we've been highlighting. We really recognize the outsized role that leaders, and we're talking about district leaders, school leaders, board members and their governance role as leaders, and, and really just building that overall sense of, of, you know, leadership with everybody in the organization. But in terms of formal leaders, we recognize the outsized role and impact that we as leaders can play in advancing both your, your culture and your strategy alongside. And so in addition to that evidence-based leadership framework that I shared briefly earlier, we also leverage these nine principles for organizational excellence. So often, and I won't today for time's sake, but often I love to ask the question of just, you know, what are points of pride as you, as you look at these, you know, principles related to the, the district work so far? And also what are priorities for you all as you see moving forward? But we find that this helps us along with the other framework, give kind of a, a compass for ensuring that we're continuing to advance, you know, just a high performing organization overall. These align with the Baldrige National Excellence, the Baldrige Excellence Framework, which is education, healthcare, growth sector, heavily evidence and research-based around common characteristics of high performing organizations. Our organization's student group, now part of Huron, is also a 2010 recipient of that Baldrige Award, which is a, a U.S. presidential level award and honor to. I, I mentioned earlier that scorecard framework. This, this is example language from, from another district. So the Burton School District in California was one of the school districts that I just shared an excerpt of. When we're working in implementation as well, we use this organizational scorecard structure to really say, align to the priority areas that you've identified in your plan. And again, these aren't yours, these, these are another district, so it's just sample language here. This would be anchored in, in what you identified. What are a small number of high, high-level annual goals at the district level that represent success? Sometimes we do this, I know you recently had a couple of board superintendent leadership team retreats. Often we're embedding into those kinds of structures and facilitating that as you have your new strategic plan, you're planning into the new year, and then we're really facilitating, how do we move from visionary to those clear goals that are measurable and definable? And so we're a facilitator with you all on that process. So defining those success measures together, aligned with your strategic plan. This, this next component, are, are these progress monitoring or lead measures? How will we know if we're on track throughout the year? Just like we ask teachers with student data, you know, even before the end of chapter or unit test, so to speak, we, we want them to kind of formatively assess what do students need and what need to adjust so they'll do as well as they possibly can. Certainly we want them to do that before the end of the year. So this is that same level of maturity at that systems and leadership level of saying, if these are our annual success measures, then how do we know if we're trending in the right direction? Because lastly, we, we want the data, the strategic plan and the data to really inform how we're implementing the strategic priorities in the right way at the right time and then scaffolding that process as well. So, so that last strategic actions is kind of like that 2080 or Pareto principle. What are the 20% of actions at this point in time, at any point in time, you know, maybe the beginning of your strategic plan implementation, that we're going to be highly committed to with our teams in terms of implementing, because we believe if we do those well, we'll get 80% of the outcomes and results from those key actions. As this process cascades over time, you know, the strategic planning process that we've talked about, that know as an immediate term priority for you, we talked a little bit about how we build that definition of that annual district scorecard or strategic scorecard, that annual kind of plan. And then over time, working with department and school leaders to bring that cascading of that process and that alignment to really truly advance the system in, in that comprehensive way. While, while simultaneously, working with leaders around culture too. And so we're really working with culture and strategy in terms of the engagement and development with leaders as we're moving the system forward. And not culture because it's a bad culture, but it's culture because we want to be really intentional about a best, you know, best place to work, best place to teach, to learn, to send, send my children as a parent of your district. And so simultaneously doing those two things together, which is also really honoring the commitment that we're making to the community and to our internal stakeholders through this process as we're developing those measures of success. So I mentioned surveys as part of the planning process, though we also have these, these surveys that most of our partners annually administer as you're implementing. And so as you think about the implementation process in that balanced way, aligned with student achievement outcomes, but also aligned with how are we making sure we're a great place to work for employees? And what are the perceptions of families and parents and students? And how are we continuously improving based on that? The surveys naturally help us to identify those other measures that help us move we're on the right track and to continue to advance the overall system. So at the end of the day, this work is, is not an initiative of itself, it's not anything new. It's really taking like, for example, on the left, all of those things that you have in place or are putting in place and you know that are important, and, and advancing your schools and district in an integrated systematic way with, with some of the examples of what you see on the right. I also kind of think some of the left language is a little bit more NAMM oriented, where a lot of what you see on the right is action or road oriented. So how are we moving those great things that you, we're doing and putting in place to action in that integrated way moving forward? So, so that, that's a little bit of, you know, one of the ways we could serve you on that right side, we could do just strategic planning or that kind of all-in integrated approach, which is the way most of the districts we serve engage with us. It's really good work, it's meaningful work, it is hard work, but it's hard work for the right reasons as we just reflect on the great community you have, the trust they've placed in you, and, and your commitment to, to good quality outcomes for them as you move forward. So with that, would love to take your questions and be responsive to anything that's mentioned on your mind.
Thank you, Ryan. Do we have any questions? Liz?
I guess I, so I just want to clarify, and it seems to me that what you're offering as far as a strategic plan is no longer some sort of, you know, plan document and then your company walks away from. It's essentially, you're saying the more progressive approach or the approach that your company is taking essentially is to redefine what strategic planning is and have it be this ongoing scorecard and assessment model. Am I wrong in, in saying that? Or is that sort of in summary where you would start? And I guess in saying that too, we've heard from other companies that have this portrait of a graduate or, you know, education elements that they hit to start off. I guess it's not clear to me what exactly your starting point is. I know you probably mentioned at the beginning, but is it, is it always the, the scorecard approach?
Yeah, great question. So, so the quick answer to your question is, is, is both, it is really our recommendation. But the strategic plan is a standalone process and product, right? So the, there, there would be that formal strategic plan that you're used to, and then, and, and you could stop there or our engagement could end there, and, and that would be, you'd have a really high-quality product that would exceed your expectations and, and the ways that, that you know of that process and outcome. And, and then that scorecard approach is, is what we recommend for the implementation process. And, and we really, it also makes that strategic plan a little bit more of a living document, if that makes sense. So it, it's not an either or. The strategic plan is, is absolutely a core deliverable and, and, you know, that would be, that would be what you would have as an outcome of the process. And then you'd have the option of, you know, the implementation framework, which is where we make the strategic plan and we really kind of annualize it and say, this is what we said was important over a three-year, five-year term. And so now, you know, what does it look like for this first year? And how do we move forward with agility in terms of achieving the results that were identified there? Is that helpful in terms of your question in that way?
Yeah, and I guess, but I guess it's not exactly clear to me, like, your version of the strategic plan that we've sort of focused in on, I think it, you've given us a lot of perspective that there's these other options once we have it or to create it more of a working document. But I think it, what wasn't clear to me is sort of what is your starting point in creating a strategic plan? Do you take this portrait of a graduate approach? Do you take this ed elements type of approach? Or it was more of a, your company would get a census of the community through surveys? I guess that's, that's really what I'm trying to understand.
Sure, absolutely. So, so we would start the, the strategic planning approach, you know, really engaging with you all and your community stakeholders with the focus groups, the, the surveys to really get the input into what's most important there, and would develop the strategic plan, you know, with you and, and based on that. So a lot of the districts we work with, you know, I, I don't know the ratio, but many of them do a portrait of a graduate as well, but we don't see it as a linear thing to where, it could be, so I'm not, I'm not saying that. Just our personal view is that one doesn't have to start with a portrait of a graduate, but rather we would just, we would start with the conversations and the community engagement. And, and that, that outcome staying centered, and, and another one of your presenters mentioned that design thinking element. And so that design thinking lens is, is a key component of this as well, which just really simply means whoever we're engaging with in terms of the stakeholders, what's their connection and what's most important to them? For many of them, it's going to be parents and students or employee, you know, parents and their children or employees and teachers and students. Clearly student outcomes at the centerpiece of that. But the, the starting point for the process would, would really be the community engagement elements. The portrait of a graduate can be part of it, it doesn't have to be, that would be up to you all. If it is part of it, we personally recommend doing the strategic planning and the portrait of a graduate development integrated as opposed to one and then the other. One of the reasons for that is, is the thin group of stakeholders that would convene to get input for, for the design of both of those products, so to speak. And so rather than starting with one and then going to the other, we have that integrated conversation together so it doesn't feel siloed or like two different things.
Hope?
Thank you, Ryan, for taking that time. So what I'm hearing you say is that, because you mentioned how will we know where we're successful? That's, it sounds like where you guys really start, right? And how our board, our community, our faculty defines that, really kind of defines where we go out from there versus pegging ourself in any one particular approach of K through 12, where's the graduate or anything like that? That's what I'm hearing you say?
It really, I mean, it really does start aspirational and visionary. So what's most important in, in terms of the students and community we serve? And then as, as we get closer to implementation, that's where we really go to how we know, right? What does success look like? Really kind of push ourselves to take that visionary and aspirational element that's important in a plan and, and is a good starting point to really say how we know as we get closer to realizing that, so we know if the strategies we're putting in place are actually making the impact or not.
So my actual question, you, you had mentioned, I appreciate that you mentioned the culture and strategy advancement going hand in hand, because really if you don't align those two, you- you're not going to have much success. And you also mentioned closing the feedback loop, which I also highly appreciated, going back to the steering committee, making adjustments. Those things can be a heavy lift in a consulting engagement. So I'm wondering, can you speak a little bit about your makeup of your team and the expectations of integration with our internal team?
Absolutely. So, you know, I represent a team of people who just, you know, honestly and bluntly have even deeper expertise than me, so I hope mine is good and sufficient, though theirs is even deeper. They have been in roles like superintendent, district level, school level leadership, you know, many of them started their career in teaching. And then their day to day, you know, the work they do now, to be honest with you, day to day, they're working with boards and leaders around achieving results from the strategic plan. You know, they're doing that more often than strategic planning.
Excuse me, Ryan, just to interject, I'm looking more for like, what's the makeup of your team, not their background. I'm looking for, are you, how many people are you talking about doing this work? What's the team looking like and then how are you going to integrate with our team?
Thank you, thank you for that. So for each client that we serve, we have one, we have a key person who is that consistent coach that is working with you all. And then there's a team behind them. But rather than you all feeling like you've got to know who does what or liaising with multiple people, we have a key individual who works directly with you. And then we have some behind the scenes, sometimes who might be with that person or other times might not even be, might be literally behind the scenes. So for example, we have both a leader and a team that does research, survey, analysis and research and development work. And so they're behind the scenes, key part of what's making a lot of the work occur. When we're onsite, you know, as we schedule focus groups and sessions like that, there may be times where that main coach who's dedicated with you all may want to bring a colleague for extra hands as we're managing through if there's a need to do like concurrent focus groups or whatnot. And in terms of the integration with your team, we work very closely with the superintendent or the superintendent's designated or designated, both around, and with you all too, right? But a key person who is communicating internally as well, so we know we're consistently staying aligned with your expectations. And then sometimes there may be someone else who you or the superintendent might designate for us to work with the real logistics, scheduling and then also, you know, typically maybe somebody who we're connected with individually related to communication and that community piece. That may be the superintendent, or you may have somebody else who is kind of that communications type person on the district who's helping with some of those processes. We take the lift though, so you all are participants. I don't want it to sound like we don't have a lift, but you're really valuable in terms of your perspective and the input and direction that you provide. And we're not really taxing you as carrying a lift. Our goal is to not tax you in terms of carrying a heavy lift individually, if that answers the question.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Ryan, the last question.
My question was answered, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ryan. We appreciate you spending time with us.
Thanks, Ryan, thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, so when we originally talked to people, we talked about 10 minutes. So Barrett Christina from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. We're almost on time, Barrett?
Thank you, everyone. Nice to sort of see everybody again. Thank you for the invitation and allowing us to give a quick presentation. I'm actually going to hand it over to NHSBA Strategic Planning Consultant Mark Dolan to provide the bulk of our presentation. And we're both happy to answer any questions at the conclusion.
Thanks, Barrett.
Thanks, Barrett.
Oops, I'm kind of here, Mark.
You're muted, Mark.
We make you guys wait till the end and then we mute you, Barrett, that's the deal.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me? Anyone?
Yeah.
Hello. Great, nice to speak to all of you. I'm happy to share some information with you tonight on the strategic planning service that NHSBA has been providing to schools. Let me get my slideshow up there, can you all see that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So again, my name is Mark Dolan, I'm a strategic planning process consultant and facilitator for NHSBA, former school board member of Stratford, New Hampshire. So I applaud the work you're doing, very important work, and I also applaud you taking this initial effort in shopping around for what is available, what help is out there. So at its core, strategic planning is really a process to begin a dialogue, to start talking about the desired future state. Many schools get wrapped up in the day to day running of the school district, which is normal. They very rarely take the time to pause and talk about what's working, what is our desired future state, and what is happening outside of these walls of our school that is impacting education. So part of the process is we assess the current direction that the school is going in relation to what's happening in the world and begin to set priorities and really emphasize focusing energy and resources on supporting student learning. So I'll talk a little bit later on how this plan has to be manageable and it has to be, it has to be manageable and it has to be something that is understood by the larger community, because it's competing, the strategic plan is going to be competing with, as I mentioned before, the day to day running of the school. And when new things are presented and new innovative ideas are put in place, they frequently will lose out to the day to day things because of lack of priority, lack of resources. So talking a little bit about who I am, I am a strategic planning facilitator. I will be working with you. I've been working with New Hampshire school districts since 2007 doing strategic planning. So this is a service that New Hampshire School Boards Association provides, and I've been working since then helping them do that. My process is to design and facilitate the process for the school district using a planning committee. And I'm not going to, I stay neutral on content, I'm not going to tell you what you need to be doing. I help you develop your own solutions in a way that meets the district's specific needs. Now, over the years, working with school districts, we've been hearing more and more about, can you help us with implementing the plan? And that's not something NHSBA has been providing. I would help the school build a plan and that would be the extent of the service. Most recently, I've been talking to Bill Bryant with the Bryant Group, and NHSBA will be partnering with Bill and his group to provide that support after the plan, to really help leaders build capacity to help support change that is going to be required and to sustain that change. And we really look at that, or Bill's group really looks at that under these three different lenses that I've mentioned here. Culture, you know, what is our existing culture? What are our values and guiding beliefs? What is our ability currently to innovate, to do some things that are different? That may require skills and capabilities to be built and improved upon. We use a portrait of a graduate as well, which I'll talk about in a minute. And then process improvement, what are the policies, processes and procedures that we need to change in order to support the goals in the plan? And Bill's group also looks at talent management and things like performance management. So we're really trying to expand the scope of this service using the help of Bill Bryant and his team.
Mark, I apologize for interrupting, I was curious, are you moving through slides right now or are you still on your first slide?
I'm moving through slides.
So we're, actually, what we're seeing is your kind of presenter mode, your side, and we're not, we're seeing your initial slide inside of the, there you go, perfect, thank you.
Oh, apologize, Fred, I was in slide presentation mode myself.
That's okay, we're with you now, thank you.
All right, thank you. So the process of thinking strategically about your district, again, that's something that you do very often because you're very tactical, schools are very tactical. So in order to move to a more strategic approach, I like to look at these questions and ensure that we get agreement throughout the process on these basic questions, starting off with, okay, where are we? What is our current state? And I'll talk about the different tools that I use to help you answer these questions in a follow on slide. What is our, the current environment that we're working in, both internal, you know, inside our schools as well as external? What is at stake if we don't do anything? If we stay right where we are, what is at stake? And I've found that that's an important conversation to have. People have different opinions of what is at stake and what we should focus on. So that is an important area to get agreement on amongst leadership within the school district. And certainly, what are we trying to create? What are we trying to build using the strategic planning process? And a very important component is what are those vital few areas that we need to focus on, give our energy towards, to create the district we think our students need? So part of these things that we consider during this is what is the role of technology? Will it play, what is it playing currently? Where does learning occur? Where can it occur? Where should it occur? Learning occurs everywhere, and so we start to ask that question to get the, to get the committee to think a little bit broader than what we're used to. How can we help educators deploy unique tools to help pathways of learning? And then a simple question, but an interesting one to ponder, what is the student's role in their own education? Are they actively participating in it or are they just a passive spectator? We really try to bring the student's perspective into the process as we go through this. And that will involve bringing the students in, surveying the students. So some of the tools I've been using, and I'm currently working with the Auburn School District and the Raymond School District. So these are some of the tools that we've been using, I've been using with them. I use a global best practices assessment tool to help them assess initially where they're at as opposed, or as a comparison to these best practices. And then for years, I've been using what's called a SWOT analysis, I'm sure many of you have heard of that. I migrated to a more appreciative inquiry approach, more positive approach that is called a SOAR approach, which stands for strengths, opportunities, aspirations and results. So it builds on the strengths that are currently existing within the school district rather than focusing on the weaknesses. I found it to be a much more uplifting process, how can we build on what's working rather than how do we fix what's broken? Now, we don't ignore things that are not working well, we just don't make it a focus of the effort. We try to focus on building on what's working currently. So that's been a shift in the process that I've used over the years. And you've heard some of these from some of the other companies, a community engagement plan is very important. I've found that people will support things that they are able to help create. So we use a community engagement plan, very similar to what you've heard previously, getting the community involved in what I like to call community listening sessions. And the listening is the planning committee listening to the community. We do student surveys, focus groups, things like that as well. Innovation, I do quite a bit of research in education and I bring up something called innovation, educational insight cards, which it's based on a theory of innovation really only exists where, with things we don't understand. If we're trying to innovate just within our own understanding and our own knowledge, we're not likely to be very innovative. So let's look broader and see what else is happening within the education space. So I capture these research information on insight cards and the planning committee will use those as part of their process to help them think broader about some of the challenges. And I use methods from the student design thinking, student centered design thinking, which really is based on human centered design. The goal is to shift the paradigm of how we think about, you know, building schools and changing schools. Rather than just trying to improve what we currently have, we try to shift to what do our children need and how do we build a school to meet that need? And that all starts with the strategic planning. So some of the basic components of a strategic plan, you've heard these before, mission statement, portrait of a graduate. So I've used a lot of the work that Patel has presented to you. I used to do vision statements, they're still fine, schools may want them, but they don't do a lot. I don't see vision statements driving a lot of change in behavior, changes within the school. Whereas a portrait of a graduate allows a different way of defining student success. And it really asks a different question, which I think is helpful. What do we want our students to be able to do and know and be competent in when they leave our school district? So that's a helpful exercise, creating a portrait of a graduate. And as I said before, few focus areas, so the plan is manageable. I've seen some plans that they can get out of control, they're just too big. There's a lot of great ideas, and what's difficult in this process is deciding what good idea we're not going to do. So deciding what not to do can be a challenge. So that gets to the prioritization of what's really most important. And then we develop goals and strategies to support those goals. And I'll go fairly quickly through these. So my timeline, the level of effort is, we start the process off with a one or two day leadership retreat, that's typically the board and school leadership, building administrators. And we work on assessing the current state, we'll do the SOAR exercise as a group, strengths, opportunities, aspirations and results. And then a strategic planning committee will be formed where we bring in other stakeholders, parents, community, students, to do most of the work. So I'll be facilitating, my time, most of my time is with the planning committee. We'll meet twice a week, each meeting's about two or three hours at a time. I like to use a six month target. Once we get beyond six, seven, eight months, people get burned out, they want to get the plan done, so I like to keep it around six months. And certainly that's flexible. Any shorter than that can seem rushed, much longer than that can seem, wow, this is a long process, you really want to get it done. So I'll leave you with some philosophy that I have, the process of doing this, and you may know this because you're being very proactive in developing this information opportunity here tonight, the process of doing this sometimes is more effective in creating the change than the actual plan itself, because you're talking to people about things that are important, you're getting alignment on what's important. Another point is, this plan has to be understood by everyone. You have to watch out for the educational jargon when trying to communicate this plan to the community. You don't do this once and forget about it, it's really part of a long term, as we heard, living document, not an isolated event. And it really needs to be the plan for the district. Some schools I've worked with, the school board goals, there's all kinds of different goals, and then there's a strategic plan. It really needs to be, the plan has to drive other plans within, in the district, it has to be the primary focus. And that's it, that's all I have.
Well, thank you, Mark. Let's open it to questions from the board. Do we have any questions? Liz?
Oh, and Mark, go ahead.
If you want to go ahead first, I'll go this way.
Sure, thanks, Mark. We've, in doing our research to bring companies in to help educate the board, we heard the two terms talked about that, you know, so post-COVID, some strategic plans are taking more of a sprint approach to the plan as opposed to the traditional 10-year goal setting. And I, have you made that pivot as well in a, a lot of the outcome plans that you're designing, or are you seeing that transform here in the center?
Yes, pre-COVID, it was a five-year plan with a 10-year vision. Post-COVID, people want, uh, they want something that's much more short-term. So, the, the, I mean, I, I usually would love to be able to develop, but it never seems to, to come out, once we get the plan in place, a one-year, one-page strategic plan. What are we going to do for a year? And then reassess, reassess. And it sounds, it, it sounds like the bar is low when I say that, but you'd be surprised how much work it takes when you have a three-year plan together. So what do we want to do in one year? And, and if we're really good and the information is there, we may develop strategies for Plan Two, but we spend a lot of time on, what are the strategies in Year One that we want to go work on? What are the things we want to do to move us towards our goals? And then if you build in a really effective monitoring and assessment process, then you'll, you'll know, okay, what's working, what's not working, and then you adjust after Year One to start to build Year Two. I found that to be successful.
Thanks, super helpful.
Good question, thank you.
Liz?
I have a few questions. I guess, first off, I just want to understand that you're the strategic planning consultant for New Hampshire School Board Association, so is that some sort of benefit that is built into our membership? Or is this an added, this is just an ex, like, this is sort of like a side piece to...
It, it's a four-fee service.
Okay. And then, um, um, I guess I'm trying to understand, and what I kind of wish I could have everybody that just presented in front of me to ask is, what it, like, what are people doing, what is most popular? And so I, I hear that you're saying that this shorter model, but I guess I didn't really hear you say any, I, I, maybe I missed it, but, you know, we're, we're hearing about these, like, um, face of a graduate, or whatever, the Portrait of a Graduate, education elements, a broader picture from the community. Is there some sort of version that you take in doing your approach? And, and, you know, is there, what are, like, what's the most popular pick, I guess, amongst districts?
Well, Portrait of a Graduate is, is fairly new. Portrait of a Learner is something that I'm working on with, with Auburn. Portrait of an Educator is something they're interested in. So these things called portraits are, are redefining what success is. So it's becoming very popular. Vision statements, there's nothing wrong with vision statements, but Portrait of a Graduate is, is something that I'm recommending to schools. I, I think the, the process of developing that is very important. Because, like I said before, the question you're asking, we don't ask. We care about GPAs, and there's a lot of the test scores, but we very rarely say, what are the skills they need to, to go out into the world and either go to college, get a job, just be an active participant in life? Those are skills we all need, we all need them. And they'll work, they'll work in any path the, the student takes. But, schools don't tend to, to think that broadly. Our success may be defined in going to secondary, going to college, higher education. So it, it, it really changes what student success looks like. And then you take that, and you say, okay, if that's what our students are supposed to leave our school with, what do the educators need to do? What are, what are the competencies and skills that they should be bringing forward to support that? How do they need to change? So it's really changed the conversation. And, you know, it lands in a plan, but, but implementing it is, is, I think, still new. What I'm going to be doing with, with Raymond is I'm asking another SAU that has a Portrait of a Graduate, they've had it for a while, they're in New Hampshire, I won't mention their name, but they have a Portrait of a Graduate, and they've had it for a while. I'm going to ask the superintendent to speak to the, to the Raymond Strategic Planning Committee and say, okay, we have had a portrait, what has changed in your school because you've had this portrait? What are some of the things that have changed? Because it really is supposed to be a driver of change. So I, I found that to be a, a best practice in today's strategic planning.
Any other questions?
And how big the plan is, did they, was your other question, like, one year, two years, three years?
Well, no, you hadn't mentioned that, but I guess I just was curious, and I wish I were able to ask everybody, you know, what's your top seller here, as far as, what are, what are most people leaning towards? I guess I'm curious, you know, are, like, what's the latest and greatest, and what is, you know, what are most districts jumping on? And maybe this is a question we could find in a magazine or something, uh, Association Magazine, but maybe you know the answer as well?
Do we have another question? Any other questions? No? Okay, good for us. I think we're all set.
Thank you, guys, for hanging in there.
Thank you. Good to see you. Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
So, um, I'll just, no, go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
So what, um, what we thought would be helpful is giving people time to marinate with a lot of the information we took on, and then provide your thoughts to Nancy and I, that we can then direct to the RFP group. You know, ma- maybe after hearing all of this, it's more clear what would work in our district for you versus what would not. That's the feedback we need. The purpose of tonight was to get a sense of the scope and spectrum of out there, and then for us to think about, okay, we've heard a lot about the needs in Portsmouth, which of those strategies do we think would best access those and come up with a, a dynamic plan that would lead to implementation and improvement? So, I don't think it's valuable to have that conversation right now. I think we all need time to really take it in and, and personalize it, and then offer, offer feedback. And, and ideally, I think that should be about a one-week turnaround, so that the RFP group has time to gather and sit with it and give us a draft, and stay on target. We're right on target with our timeline, so I'd like to stay on target, so if you could get feedback within a week.
Sorry. So I was just going to say, don't, um, I would, I would encourage, in terms of what will be helpful to the RFP group, is don't think of like, well, this is the menu, and I want option one. I think one of the things you heard from several of the groups, some more so than others, I think you kind of heard there was a sliding scale around customization. And so, you know, I think what would be helpful is some of the feedback, just be like, these are some of the elements that I thought were intriguing. Like, I really am very interested. I think focus groups of the community would be very important. I think, um, I'd like to see us do heavy survey work. I really would like a company, somebody that's going to do, has a background in data analysis. I really want, like, and will, then, because I think what I heard, Hope, when you were talking with the RFP the last time, the draft, it was like, it was really, really broad. So, we don't want to be so narrow that we squeeze out everybody except for, like, one vendor. But if there are elements that we think are really important, there might be some vendors who are like, but we don't do that. You know, we really don't do, we can't do community-wide focus groups on a large scale, we can't do whatever, we don't really do the data analysis piece. One key element, I think, that you can tell in a couple of different groups is this idea of groups who are interested in not just the development of the plan, but then working with us around implementation, and that's like, that's a big tipping point. And that's also a price tag change, too. So there are some groups who are like, no, we get you to the plan, awesome, go do it, it's you, you got the plan. And there are other groups who are like, we are, we'll help you develop the plan, and then we're going to work with your leadership teams and other stuff, and you as a board to help kind of move that along. That's a big decision point, uh, and it's also increases costs. So just something to think about.
Can, can I just add to the point of, like, a company also that does developmental work but doesn't do implementation, that will drive the difference in how they develop a plan, if they have not had the experience of execution and, and thinking about, how is this going to be implemented, operationalized while you're developing the plan? So it's not so much just thinking about it as, oh, they design and they implement, it's also in their design work, how are they thinking about the design, is it from the start to the finish of operation?
Liz?
I have questions for Zach, and I don't, I think now might be the time to pose them and maybe get answers back, if you don't have an answer now. So I have a few, and I guess maybe, like, I'm kind of kicking myself in the butt, because I wish I had the whole panel here to say, you know, I'm going to ask everybody, give me an answer, you know? But, um, I think, I guess I'm curious, like, what's popular across the nation as far as what people are doing with these? And there's all these pitches about, like, these ideas of Portrait of a Graduate, but it's, there's, it's not clear to me what actually has worked, or what people are finding successes with, and I don't know if COVID has thrown a wrench into those things. So basically, what's popular, what's working, and also cost points of these things? Because if we're talking, um, the only way that they're going to, like, the only way we're going to sort of get engagement on this, or get the end result, is to buy into this five-year payment plan with a company, then maybe that's something we all need to consider upfront, because that's going to give us the best end result. And so I have those questions, and I guess I also wonder, like, what is our district's capacity? So are we really, like, are we really gearing towards getting some sort of strategic plan and having a company help us along the way for the next three to five years? Because that's really the best way to do this with a, a partner in that way? Or, and that's like the most progressive, new way of doing this? Or is our, is our district, you know, so well-positioned, and, and our, our staff so engaged, that we could take all these website links that they're giving us for free, take the strategic plan and do our own thing with it? And I don't know if that's a determination we make now, or upfront when we do this RFP, or if something to consider later. So I don't know if you want to come back with answers, or if you have any understanding now?
Just the interest of time, I'll give you two quick, quick responses. So the first is, it's just in terms of trends, the Portrait of a Graduate thing is, is the trendy thing. So, um, you know, five years ago, I don't know, I remember the first time I started, I was at a presentation where, and it was Patel who was initially introduced this as a concept, and now everyone else is gobbling it up and copying, basically. I remember the first time I saw it was maybe, I don't know, five, six years ago, I was at a conference, and, and there was a, there was a presentation from, from Patel, and I'm like, oh, it's an interesting concept. And, and basically, all it did, it took the, what we talked about before is kind of like the COE classic model, which they talked about, which is like, you have a mission, a vision, a core values, and then like, five or six core goals, and then you would develop some type of, depending on how far you went, then you develop some action steps underneath those goals. The, the big change, which I think has been, part of the reason why it's trendy is, people have liked it in communities, has been that talking about, basically, describe the kid who walks across the stage at PHS at the end, if we were successful. People can engage that conversation at a bunch of different levels. And so there's been a decent amount of community engagement, I think, and people have seen some success and engagement in their communities beyond what was there before, through this concept, which is really, it's not this, like, unbelievably mind-blowing concept, it was just like, you, you're putting this into like a vessel that people can talk about. So that's the trend, I would say, and, and it was, right? It was initially a Patel project.
It was Patel, and, and the other piece of the Portrait of a Graduate, that you're starting to see this in, in other places sort of show up, like in the NEASC reaccreditation process, it's coming up. Like, what, what is your vision for the, the student that you produce? Uh, and, and in terms of thinking about it, like, if this was a manufacturing, like, what is the widget coming off the line? What is, what are you promising? What are you saying is going to be your product, your, your graduate? What are they? And how do you define that? And how do you know that they're ready for the world of work out there, or whatever their future might be, knowing full well that right now, we don't, we don't even know what the world's going to look like in two years? Because things are changing so quickly. So yeah, it was definitely Patel.
And I would say that the other thing in terms of district capacity, is totally depends, I, I think, what I've seen in my own experience, and then, and other, as I've watched colleagues go through strategic planning process stuff, it, what ends up, the breakdown happens in implementation, most of the time. You get a, you go through this process, I think Bart Doherty did a good job at the end of articulating it, everybody's exhausted at the end, because it's been hard, you've had a lot of hard conversations, you've done a lot of prioritizing, it's a lot of aspirational statements. You put it on a pa, piece of paper, or you put it up on the website, and then it's like, great, we're done. And then he did a great job talking about the, how it has to be the plan, and not like, hey, here's a strategic plan, and this year as a board, we're going to have four other goals. And it's like, no, 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 we're going to implement the thing that we just spent a year developing, saying that what, so, so in terms of our, the bandwidth, I think, is determined by two things, is how much day-to-day stuff is going on. And I think as you have new leadership, we're still learning the day-to-day operations, so it's, so, so I think the bandwidth is limited compared to having, if we had 10-year veterans in both of these roles. And the bandwidth is also determined by the board, in terms of how focused the board is or is not. So we can spend all kinds of time creating a great plan about these couple of things we're going to do, and you could have four things you're trying to do over three years, and there are huge lifts to do, and they take all kinds of institutional focus and energy, and people easily get bored and say, I don't really want to talk about the three goals, I want to talk about why doesn't everybody have the same number of Cubbies between Little Harbor and New Franklin? And it's like, boom, you just blew three nights on Cubbies, and instead of being like, what really is core to what we're trying to do? So for, for me, my, my hope in, is that, and this was exciting about coming here, is we actually go through a process that creates the plan that is focused with a bunch of community input, and then we can hold together as much of the board as possible, because then elections happen too. And we hang together as long as possible on, on a plan that we actually have focused time to implement. And the board stays on, the board and leadership stays on point around those things. Because then, then I'm, I'm really interested in what happens when that occurs, because I've seen it when you just develop a nice plan that goes on the website. So anyways, that's a long answer to, yeah.
Hope?
I just, I just wanted to add, I think it's great that they provided some examples, but I think it's really important as a district that we recognize, we don't want to wear someone else's plan. So, I, you know, what, what COE works in one place is not going to necessarily be what fits on us. So, you know, as we're thinking about people, and not necessarily, as you said, that these are the, these are the four or five or whatever, right? Like, as we're thinking about an RFP and how we write that, and looking at consult, any really solid, skilled consultant should be able to come in and help us get to the point of, like, what is the core of us? And what is the values of us? And what is going to look for success for us? And then how are we going to measure that out? So I think it's really important that while things can be trendy, you also, and, and trendy can have, like, innovation to it, right? Like, I understand that. But you also, you want someone that may look at that and say, okay, we can invite some of those new innovative ideas in, but we don't have to just wear that cap. We can also look at these things, because these other things fit your district really well. So I just want to caution us about, you know, taking on someone else's...
Yeah, I would say my trendy is not an endorsement of the trend, it's just, that's what's...
No, no, I hear you, I'm, I'm just, I'm not even talking about that in particular. I'm just saying in general, like, you know, as we're looking at what's working, what's not working, just because something's working in one district doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to work here. Again, if we're not, if we're not behind it to execute it anyway, or, or change the culture.
Carrie stands up.
And Danielle, did you still...
Oh, yeah. Danielle, okay.
I just wanted to add two points into, first of all, I love this conversation that's happening, from a staff point of view, and I think what you said is correct, is that this is going to guide everything else, and you have an entire staff body that is itching for that focus, that goal. You know, we're all tired, you're all tired, but at the same time, when this is really what puts purpose and vision, vision and, you know, and aligns with that mission, then it, it, it helps us as a staff to get together and carry out what you, but what we are all saying is important for our kids. And I think the wording on it, mission, vision, and goals, is really the same as portrait when both are done well. And we see that in the classroom a lot, that the, the language changes on it, but if we're doing it to the heart, which is like, absolutely what it sounds like we're trying to do, it is the same. It's about aligning, who are we? What do we want for our children, and how do we get there?
What our students want for themselves.
I have a question. Oh, Carrie, Carrie? Carrie?
Just wanted to, I just wanted to add that, I think it would be, I, I think, just to go back to what Marco said, getting the feedback to Nancy as you reflect on this experience, on hearing these presentations, and then getting that to the RFP committee so that we can guide that, and there may be another sort of feedback mechanism, we haven't met as a group, we're meeting after this, that will put in there, a survey or something to go out, but just get that feedback so that we can have that for our conversation soon, very soon.
Thank you, Carrie. What is the budget for this? Um, what is the budget for this?
It's moving. It's on the document, you wear the hat.
Did I miss that?
We approved it last year.
It was like forty thousand.
Yeah, we added, we added dollars to the budget.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But it doesn't have to be held at that number.
You know, I think.
Still fluid.
Is there a range?
Forty, what you originally slid, thirty?
Fluid.
I remember.
We have clients online, fluid.
Thirty and for this purpose, or these related purposes, but, you know, obviously.
Hope's point is good, but.
Yeah. Got clients online.
Can we, can we get like documents, Zach, that have sort of like from these companies? Will they supply us anything? I guess.
Most of the time, most of the time, no. So it's not like you go, and I think this is, I mean, this is why you do your RFP process. Because most, it's not like, um, it's not, um, I don't know. It's not going and doing the menu, and I'll take two of these and three of those, and each of these are eight bucks. And it's and it's frustrating that it's not that way, because sometimes you want it that way. You want to be able to be like, I want to alacart this, and I want to know exactly what it's gonna cost. So instead, we'll develop the RP. Most, most of the time, people will create, if we're smart, and I think this wasn't part of the process last time, right? There wasn't like a range of, of, it was like, this is the dollar now. It must be between blank and blank.
Right.
And and between blank and blank, we want your proposal to include at least X amount of elements, um, this type of timeline, what does the out, the end product look like, those types of things. And we can be as vague or as narrow as we want, just knowing that, you know, if we're too vague, we're gonna get stuff all over the place that might not reflect our core concepts of what we would like. And if we're too narrow, we might not get, we might get one or no people to bid on our proposal. So I mean, those are, and if it is too narrow, and certain people know that they're the only people to do it, it also might increase cost, uh, too. So I mean, those are all the things that go into it, and it can be frustrating. And that's the, you know, that's the beauty of a skillfully crafted RFP, you know, is that hopefully you know the field well enough to try to pick that sweet spot.
Are there, are there companies who are missing though from tonight?
That is first.
So this is maybe a question for Zach and Patty that we could address later, but I just want to put out there. It would be helpful for me to understand your thinking in terms of, with all of the stuff that has to happen in the district all at once right now, you know, how much time, you know, how much resources, like how many people, you know, kind of across the district, do you envision committing to this? Because I just feel like that could shape how we approach it. I mean, more feedback is always better, and more voices is always better. But people have a lot on them. So it would just help me to sort of think through, you know, how big a sort of tent do we want, you know, just in terms of all the other demands on people? Does that make sense? And I don't know if you need to answer that on the spot, but it would just help me.
I think if you get each proposal, we're gonna have to gauge that, like what's.
Yeah.
So I think there were some questions about, and Brian asked about boots in the ground.
I'm sorry.
How many people are gonna be on the ground? Hope was talking about, was really pushing the student Ryan about like, what's your actual makeup, your team gonna be, so that I can analyze whether, how much lifting you're actually gonna do? Because you're talking like you're doing the lifting. So is it, how many people were talking about doing this lifting?
Right.
Um, you know, so so I think in some cases, it's like, we're not gonna totally know until we have the thing in hand. I will say that if I really feel like we should devote, this is something you guys had as a priority before I came in. I think it's a huge priority in terms of if you want, you're you're a really good district that does a lot of things well. But you also, my impression so far is, there's a lot of people acting independently under this big umbrella called Portsmouth School Department. Um, and there's some amazing things happening independently inside, underneath that umbrella. But they're not necessarily, they don't necessarily all dovetail with one another. And part of that is because there's not some clear kind of, here's the North Star of what it is we're trying to do, clearly articulated in a vision that 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 people have bought into, that says, okay, here's how we get to the next, the next place. Um, and and I'm, so I'm really, really hopeful that this is the way to do this. And it has to be done, to Danielle's point, it has to be done in conjunction with staff. Staff have to be at the table, because staff have had a lot of autonomy in this district for a long time. So it can't just be from a pond high, the board, and I know you're not gonna do this. But if the if the board, the superintendent, the new superintendent was just throw a lightning bolt down and say, this is what it is, it's not gonna happen. Uh, so it's, lots of people have to be at the table to help craft something.
And just just to follow up on that, too, knowing, having gone through this in a previous district and having done the lift, it's a lot.
Yeah.
And knowing, and knowing that there would be a team, whether it's one with background people, two with other, however, knowing that you could bring the team in and knowing, from just being here for a few months, knowing the community that you've gotten, how involved everybody is, being able to give people the opportunity to weigh in on and to give voice to in conversations, not just in surveys, because it's almost death by survey sometimes. It's like, oh, God, another one? Like, even on the bottom of your receipts now, you're getting them. Nobody wants to do surveys. Having those conversations is important. So I think thinking about what's what's going to balance all of all of the things that you've got right now, where you've got new leadership, you've got people who want to contribute, you've got a a plan that you want to put together, you really are sort of in almost like a synchronous spot right now, where everything could come together.
Okay, Coke, let's have the last question. We need to move on.
I I just wanted to follow up that that it seems that we are at a crossroads, you know, to say, okay, we're, we're gonna either continue operating where we're, you know, going to the fire hose every day and and be in a reactive mode, or we're going to be intentional and purposeful. And I have faith in our community. When we went through the superintendent search, to Danielle's point, we did get people coming around the table. And I think we did also hear a lot from staff of being hungry for direction. So I I don't think it's a matter for this board to say how much people and time. It's a matter of saying, are we gonna prioritize our people and time?
So just to summarize what we're saying.
Can I find out, can I find out though, if there's, are there more businesses that didn't show up tonight? But I guess I'm wondering, though, if there's people that weren't, like, other categories that weren't, you know, that weren't expressed. So tonight, I guess I'm wondering if you could email us.
Discussion is over.
A list of some of these people.
I could send you hundreds. The point of tonight, we we suss through hundreds and tried to give you the widest scope and spectrum.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
So there's a lot out there. But and to summarize, this board has already made some decisions. In our board goals, we said, we need a plan completed by the end of this year. So that is gonna be in our RFP. Let's not rehash that. We've set aside budget, and money comes out in the RFP that we can go back and forth on. So that's also not something we have to hash out. What we really need to think about right now is, we are perfectly poised with new leadership to figure out what's our marching orders going forward that has the most amount of community buy-in and the most amount of success. And so the the point of tonight was realizing, there's multiple ways of accessing it, but only we know our district better than anyone up there. So think about what works best? How does our community engage? It is likely not surveys. We know what works for us, we know what doesn't work for us, and we know what they're thirsty for. So that's the feedback that the RFP group needs. When you siph through all the information that was given to you of like, oh, yeah, that would, Portsmouth could really benefit from that, or, you know, that whole process that that was mentioned, I don't, we've been there, done that. So that's the point of the feedback. So you can play it again, if you want to re-watch it, if you've forgotten it or didn't take good notes. But it's really just give a good thought process to what's gonna be successful in Portsmouth, because we all want to get to, in June, what's the product that we can implement starting twenty twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four school year? That, we all have agreed on that. So let's think about what process works for us and give that feedback to Nancy.
So in the next week, everyone's going to, Margo and myself, email us your thoughts, what company you.
No, no.
No, not what company.
No.
But what the art stuff that they made.
Just process, what processes do we need for our district?
Okay.
Doesn't have to be associated with any, like, you've seen the cafeteria style of what's out there. Pick and choose, what do we need?
Okay.
And the RFP will put together, we will review a draft before it goes public. Then as the vendors come in, we'll choose that. There's, there's so many more steps to go, but let's get to a successful RFP.
So if everybody emails that, tomorrow, we, and should we email Zach to, put Zach on the email?
Uh, we can.
Yeah, okay.
See, Carrie's hand is up.
Oh, Carrie?
I'm so sorry, um, I don't even know if this is appropriate, and so that's why I just wanted to ask it here in the group. Um, would it be possible to, um, ask our teacher representative to join the RFP committee? Or is that a one function?
She's welcome to join it.
Would you like to do that, Danielle?
Sure.
I know, it's a short to me.
No, of course. No, I really would.
Okay. All right, great idea, Carrie. We have to end this discussion.
I guess, moving on?
No, we're moving.
We're moving on.
But no, when are we going to decide whether we're gonna do the strategic plan and this extra part? Is that part of the RFP group is going to decide that? I think that's more of like a board decision, because I think that's a big commitment. Obviously, we put money aside for the strategic plan, but this seems like it might be an ongoing thing that we may need, and so.
So if you feel that's important, then you should put that in your feedback.
That's what I'm asking everybody here, because I think when's the appropriate time to to make that decision?
Your feedback. You should put that in your feedback. If you feel like, hey, implementation's important, put that in your feedback together.
Okay, we are moving on. But Lisa, did you have something?
No, I was just making sure you saw Carrie's hand behind you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, superintendent's report. Thank you, everyone, for that discussion.
I'm curious, it was a point of order. Do we feel like we're gonna, are we in, so we, let's see, ten minutes per person would have got us to about seven forty-two.
Plus five minutes of questions.
Plus five minutes of questions, so seven, seven.
So eight oh-two.
Eight oh-two, so it's nine twenty-six.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just checking around. I I want, because I definitely want to make sure, if we have time, maybe we're gonna be fine. But I want to make sure we get to Carrie's stuff for sure. And then Primex for Nathan's really important, too, on some of this stuff. So anyways, I'll just, so maybe I'll just say on superintendent's report, there is written information there. I tried to respond to some of the things that people had some questions about in the last meeting. Let you know that I had, we'd gone a little bit further than we needed to on process in terms of the resignation. Um, and I'll say quickly, because I think we could go, we could go way down in the weeds tonight on parking, but I don't know if that's really worth our time at the moment. We're happy to come back to it. I think the very quick version is, there's a paragraph in there included that basically, originally, it goes back to one of those weird things, where it was, it was to offset the cost of busing, which wasn't necessarily gonna be provided. And it was, but it really has drifted away from that over time, and it's just kind of a thing that is at least in part, not based on dollar amount, in part due to a lack of available slots. It can't be anybody who wants to come can get a slot. Instead, there's a bit of dollar amount attached to it. Whether, a great question, as we reconnect to this, which is partially sparked by people in the community, is, is the dollar amount the right dollar amount or not? And what is it, what does that do or not do in terms of accessibility to all students? Um, and and that's something we're happy to reconsider and look at more deeply as an administrative group. But but the but the community question led to a deeper exploration of that, so it ended up being pretty good.
All right, can I just say something? This is not a board decision. This is a decision of the administration of the high school and the superintendent and the, you know, the admin. So I think we can have all the discussion we want, but the bottom line is, it's not a board decision. It's not a board discussion.
But it will be something, the other opportunity for the board to engage it in some way would be during the budget season. We will come back. It's a, it's a, it's a, that, what is now generating thirty-two thousand dollars that I have in front of me, um, is a revenue stream that does not go roll back specifically back into the parking lot, but is a general revenue, revenue stream that goes back into the general fund.
It's targeted at busing right now, because of the backstory that's led to it.
So there's an opportunity, we come back to budget, to talk about that particular source of revenue and whether or not it should be reallocated in some other way, or it should be less revenue.
Okay, can we move on to the next item? Do you want to talk about any of these other items that are on your list here?
It's pretty clear in the memo.
Shall we move on?
I'm I'm happy in my list to move on.
I appreciate these memos, they're super helpful.
Yes, I agree. It's wonderful that you give us that feedback.
Can I have one, one comment on this?
No, we're moving on.
I mean, are we, like, isn't supposed to be open for a comment?
This is an award discussion.
I just have one comment that it came to my attention from a community member. And the one comment is that, given the discussion about the parking fees and busing and whatnot, it's coming to my attention that there's no after-school bus for extracurriculars. So there's a lot of kids in low-income communities that are doing sports and whatnot, that are having hard times, and people are having to coordinate, to carpool, and try to get these kids home after school. So there's, and so I guess I'm just wondering if that could be looked into, you know, sooner than later, if we're able to provide that, especially as winter's coming. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Financial. Nathan?
The financial report was in your package. I just tell you, remember, it's really early in the year. None of these areas are challenging the budget yet, as we project. There's going to be, over the next two or three months, areas that will show ugly, and they're in the salary realm. And let me back you up and remind you, we we successfully negotiated a teacher contract, but the the impact of that, the dollar impact of that, has yet to be finalized and transferred from the city's contingency for negotiations, which is a budget line item that the city carries. And ultimately, they'll transfer and increase our budget by that amount. They'll do so for teachers, whom you've already voted and passed, and so has the council. They'll do so for admin and clerical contracts. I mean, uh, teachers and custodian supervisors, who you and the council have already ratified. You've seen admin and clerical, they will be in front of the council in the next three weeks, month. Uh, and behind that is coming custodians and and cafeteria workers. All of those, not cafeteria workers, because that's funded, self-funded by the fees that people pay for the lunch, but all of those will see dollars transferred in. So for instance, the biggest, the biggest red, red number that sticks out will be in the teacher line right now. And that's simply because we're paying teachers against the new collective bargaining rate scale. But that budget doesn't reflect those dollars yet, because we haven't done that transfer. So I'll let you know when those come, because then you'll see a correction in this. But it's a lengthy process to decide that and then to spread the dollars out appropriately throughout the budget for all the lines that are impacted. So, um, otherwise, the financials are fairly straightforward. Happy to take any questions, but it's still early in the year to see much coming out of that. What I will remind you or ask you is, for those that are new to the board, this might look new, but for many of you that have been here, we go through a lengthy budget process. You guys, we bring it to you just after the first of the year, and that goes all the way through June. In the, in the traditional setting around the state, the state has a bunch of posting requirements of documents that you complete and post. We do it all right before we get ready to set the tax rate. So I've heard from the city finance office, and they're looking for me to finish all these reports. So here are four documents that speak to the process, and they they need to be signed. And then I upload them to the portal of the state, and then Judy, the manager, gets what she needs so she can move forward with, send the tax rate. But, um, there isn't really anything controversial in that. It's, um, but 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 the documents are there. There's a couple that I may yet tweak. There are, there are lines for Nancy to sign and for the superintendent. But I would invite you to go ahead and take a look at that. If anybody wants these, I can get copies, I can share them with them, we can talk about them. I'm happy to review that. But it's, um, it's what did the budget look before it got voted on? And what did the budget look like after? They don't really pay much attention to the city process, because the city side is doing what matters most. But I I have to comply with some of the process. I wanted to take just a minute and tell you, because I know there have been questions. I had a conversation with Nicole Owens over at STA, our bus company. She will, uh, she would share good news, that they have hired a licensed driver who is into the mix and getting her off the road so that she can go back to managing from the, from the phone as opposed to from the road. We have another in training, started today, already licensed. So you have to have a CDL, commercial driver's license, already licensed, but you have to go through the the STA training process and and make sure you're certified. We expect her to be added soon. She wasn't able to give me a timeline right now, but that will be another route back in our favor that will help address some of the time concerns and challenges we've had. She has another licensed candidate for whom she's waiting on a motor vehicle registration check and a background check. And then she was looking at three interviews this week, for, at least one of them looked really promising. She wanted to remind, she wanted me to remind all of us that it takes at least three months roughly for a CDL driver to get through the process to become CDL licensed. And they have a certified trainer in-house that manages all of their side of the training in support of that effort. If you haven't seen the signs up on some of the most visible buses, they're putting the signs up, there are lawn signs out. Anybody want one? I'm sure Nicole will be happy to offer. They are recruiting indeed, in Facebook and other social media, and recruiting options. And and even went to the touch a truck event at Peas the other day, so that they get out, and it was a real success. They generated, I think, some interest and enthusiasm.[1776.73] They are offering sign-on and recruiting bonuses in the $2,000 range.
Wow.
And anything that you can, anything that we can do to help promote, and we will continue to do that internally to try to help as we message to the community. But remember, we had 12 buses last year. We asked in the budget to add one because we were trying to chase some of the concerns that we knew we had because of some driver departures. We opened with nine, and so we're gonna climb our way back hopefully to the 13 that we had anticipated. But I wanted to give you that update. And then I guess, because in the interest of time, let me just say about Primex. When you get to that in your agenda, Primex is our insurance provider, if you will. It's not really, it's not really insurance classically. It's a risk pool. So we make member contributions to the pool, and the pool resources cover all of us. And Primex helps coordinate the administration of claims and the payment of claims as well as secures co-insurance and reinsurance to cover the pool for catastrophic loss. They do so for property liability. They do so for workers' compensation. And so we participate in that pool. P and L, we're a direct member, and Workers' Comp, we're a member of the city for that pool resource. The document that I put in there is a three-year membership commitment. And they asked me to go way further than most things and ask you for a resolution essentially to make your commitment to stay with them for three years. And for that, they limit the increases that we might suffer regardless of what happens to us in a claims history between now and then. So it caps us at a 9% maximum increase in any given year, but it essentially requires us to commit that we will stay with them. What I would say to you is, there isn't any other game that is competitive. And I have worked with a number of, a number of commercial insurers. Problem is, they, yeah, I'll have commercial insurers calling me tomorrow, but I- Primex is structured as a member organization to serve us, public schools, municipalities, counties, et cetera, in the state. They essentially carry whatever statute demands, and they cover us. What happens with a commercial insurer is that they come in and talk about pages and pages of inventory that we fill out to figure out what will be excluded, what won't be covered. And it's difficult. I'm not a specialist in this, but we have plenty of risks. So Primex, in my 20 years, has always been really good at, they cover you. We don't cover bouncy houses anymore. First time there was a real loss of bouncy houses, they covered it. And then they told us all, can't cover that anymore. That's out. But generally, Primex is always there to cover the first ones and to teach us all. So when you get there, it's a motion to accept essentially the resolution included so that we can commit to that three. And you'd be asking Zach to sign, or me, whichever, to sign on your behalf to that commitment.
And I would just say, you know, Vermont, we have something similar, the Vermont School Boards Insurance Trust, and it's a very similar arrangement. And then, and of course, the pool is just trying to cover itself. So that if we get into one year, you know, we don't like, we're not in and out when it's convenient for us. We're gonna stay long enough where they're able, the pool is able to stay robust enough to cover everybody. But in the end, it's not, it's, you know, it's a very good deal for schools, so.
And the city uses it also, correct?
The city does, yes.
In this case, this one's on our own, so we have to confront this.
And this is a fair advice, so we've taken it.
And I definitely, I definitely would tell you that in the three years that I'm looking at, there's no other place I'd want to go for our property and liability coverage, so.
Can we have a motion to approve this Primex agreement?
Second?
Second. Any discussion? Liz?
Like, what's the past cap's been as far as percentages go? And, I mean, is there any sort of negotiation on this, or like, what has it been previously?
I mean, in 20 years, I don't remember the caps in the first handful of years, but the caps have grown over time as all of us have seen claims change in this scope and expand, you know, the extent of some of the costs. So we have damage now, damage is more expensive. So right now, it's a 9% cap in each of the three years. I think the first time I saw them come out, it was a 7% cap, so it's climbed. I will also tell you that not every member is invited to participate in the cap because some members have claims history that makes them too great a risk for we, the pool, to provide them an artificial cap on what their increases might be. And I, I don't want to belabor this, but I've argued with Primex in the past because they do what they can to be competitive, to try to bring in members and then retain members. And I've said, how can you say that he'll cap me at 9%? If my losses suggest that I should be 10% or 20%, the pool demands that you should charge me an appropriate contribution rate. But again, as Zach was just saying, the cost of people coming and going and leaving the pool uncovered and without the corpus of, you know, the funds that they expect, they are better off making arrangements or offering programs to keep us all in. So this, 9% is higher than I had hoped it would be, but, and it's not just for us. The 9% is a pervasive, pervasive offer that was offered to those who participate in the cap. And some of that's based on economic conditions, not just us.
So is there a way to commit to a year or two versus the three-year 9% cap if there's like a-
No, but you don't have to participate.
Would they come, would they come back with a different offer at any point?
No, I don't, I mean, I think this is-
It's as good as it gets.
Yeah, well, this is the offer, and the reality is, you can still be insured by them and not participate in the cap, but you, you won't have the protection of, if something happened, our rates would not necessarily climb.
The industry rates have been going up a lot lately, given where we're at with inflation. Just the size of claims is becoming rapidly higher. So, I mean, I can't speak to whether 9% is the right number, but it's definitely been escalating very quickly.
And I've only been with you two or three years. Let me tell you, in the last dozen, dozen or so years, about half the time, the cap is applied. And the other half the time, the rates have been marginally increased, but they never hit the cap. The cap is a, the cap is a protection.
So we take a vote?
We're committing to staying in for three years, though, if we do this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Hope, did you have a comment?
Not on this. I did, I thought we were moving on.
Okay.
Not yet.
They haven't voted yet.
Yes, and? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, let's move on to-
I do have a quick question on the financial.
Oh, sure.
Okay, so you don't need to do it now, now? Okay.
Nathan, a question for you.
Please.
I just was curious, Nathan, on the financial report you gave, it's just a slight drive up about coaching and athletics and then a little bit bigger jump with technology. Can you tell me what's driving those averages, and do we expect a correction?
So if you look at coaching, coaching's, coaching is showing, okay, let me back up. Because we did this last year, but let's take just one second, even though it's late. Remember that this report considers the actual spending in your first column to a calculated plan, which is, based on historical averages, at this point in the year, what percentage of the budget, what amount should you have spent? If you were consistent with the average. And so the plan column is that. If you look at coaching, coaching's plan is zero because normally, at this point in the year, we haven't yet paid a coaching stipend to anybody because they just started the season. So $1,780 is ahead of plan because we actually paid somebody that we didn't pay in June when we were supposed to, or you know.
Okay, it was just a little off there.
And in the area of technology, they're ahead of plan because, and I think another year or two, and we're gonna see that adjust in the averages. We've been buying things upfront and taking better use of opportunities in the summer. So we're spending our money, we're front-loading it, spending it upfront.
So we'll see the correction. Okay, great.
You'll see that down the line. It's not going to be over budget in the long run.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nathan. Let's move on to proposed resolutions and continuing resolutions. And that's the New Hampshire School Boards Association. And Carrie, thank you for being our delegate to attend October 1st in Concord.
Ken, how are you? You're muted.
You're muted. You don't have to delegate anymore.
I don't have the best internet connection here, so I'll switch off video when I'm sharing. But I just wanted to sort of frame this. So all of these topics are ones that we could probably discuss and debate all night. And so we wanted to stay focused on the fact that this is going, this is whether, what our vote will be as a single delegate of all of the New Hampshire School Board Association. So I think probably the best strategy is to, is to sort of limit conversation to a certain timeframe. I was thinking seven minutes. And if we can't come to consensus, or we can't, we don't think we're gonna reach it, then we collectively agree to abstain. Want to talk about that?
I think that's a good point.
You're saying seven minutes total, right, Carrie? Not seven minutes?
Seven minutes for two, two of them, and that, and-
Okay.
I think it's a great plan, Carrie.
Yeah, good, good plan.
Thank you.
Yes, four times.
So I'm gonna just explain my color coding here. It's changed since you were first on it. So green bills are, we all agreed. Each, all nine members did give me responses. Yellow are the, there's one clear direction. And then the orange are, have a bit of discussion needed. So my suggestion, can you see this board okay in the projector?
Yes.
I'm sorry, where's that document?
My suggestion would be a motion to support, I don't, do we need a motion or is it consensus on this?
You don't want to board them, just leave it.
I think we don't need a motion. I think consensus is shown through the document.
Yeah.
So I would recommend a motion to support Resolution 1 and 5 and not support Resolution 3 because we're all in agreement.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, great. And then I recommend that we tackle, tackle the orange ones. And so what I have done is, I've kept track of sort of the support and other options. So if it's already the folks, I'll specifically call on those who are in sort of the minority of sorts on this so that they can speak to it. And during that time, I'll have the bill up. So Resolution number six, whoops, just read it. Resolution number six was about retirement contribution. And the majority were to not support it. There were six not support. And the, the three that were in, Anne recommended to support it, and Pip and Hope recommended to abstain. The Board of Directors' recommendation was to not support. So I think Anne, Pip and Hope, if you wanna say a little bit about this.
Sure, I'd love to hear from Nathan on this. I didn't feel like I had enough information, had been part of the conversations enough.
Six, number six.
So I wanted more information, which is why I abstained.
I feel that the state, the state should pay their share. They're the ones who created the retirement system, and they paid a share of it. Teachers paid a share of it. Everyone else paid a share. And, and the state just opted out a third, a third, a third, and now they're totally out, and they're wrong, in my view.
So I would, I gave this a cursory look, and I'm so sorry. But I, what I would, I would tell you that when Speaker, then Speaker of the House Doug Scammon answered this question in my presence, he said, I was there when we created this, and it was never the state's intent to pay 35% of the teacher contribution forever, and-
Only no one knew that.
Only no one, I mean, so he was there. He was Speaker then, he was Speaker again. And so I heard that, and I understand that the state felt like that was an intended-to-be-sunseted reality, but it was enormous when they dumped it. I guess I would tend to agree with the School Boards Association that they have positions that have spoken to this all along. So I'm not sure that this particular resolution proposed by Chester Academy is necessary, although it would be difficult for me to suggest that you oppose it because I think that it's fair and reasonable that the state should support.
They have positions, but have they, those positions are fairly old. So have they been raising the issue, I mean, 2019's the most current. Have they been advocating or raising the issue to fight?
I don't, I don't know that the School Boards Association has brought this to the, to the front, but they are, they honor their resolutions and support when legislation is proposed by whomever in the legislature.
And my understanding, and this is different, this is a new state mechanism for me, and maybe you guys all know this. So once they support these resolutions, like, they hold on to them until they are out. So even though it says 2010, it's still like, here are the stated positions of the New Hampshire School Boards Association, and it's not out, it's still in there, just rolling, saying, you still should do this, you still should do this.
And I think Hope points out, I mean, I'll extend and suggest, I'm not sure that, I mean, School Boards Association can't introduce legislation. But School Boards Association, as well as other agencies in the state, they work with, they work with interested members of the legislature as they come to, they come to office or while they're in office and encourage them to tackle these kinds of topics. This is one that comes up almost each session. Some sessions, it gets more legs, and some sessions, it gets less. And I don't know until recently that it got enough legs to become anything other than, you know, a whipping cry, that, you know, you took it away and you shouldn't have. And we, you know, we've heard since. It's unfortunate that the funding, that the state's contribution to the funding ended in the same generation that we were dealing with absolute mismanagement of the fund. And we have $3 billion underfunded for the liabilities that exist. And so the employer rates, employee rates went up, and the employer rates have climbed as well to try to catch up to and stabilize the fund. And, and so this only made it more difficult on employers.
It's costing the city a lot of money.
It is costing, definitely.
So I guess I would support the state paying, but I thought that that first 2010 resolution covered the idea that they should be making their contributions. So I wasn't sure how this added to it. So that was where my idea came from?
Yeah, I would say the same, but now looking at it, it looks like there, it has sort of been renewed almost. 2010, 2011, 2019, similar sentiments. So I don't know, you know, I guess maybe I would change my position from, if this is something that we need to renew and restate essentially. But I mean, I guess if we're renewing everything, so I guess if somebody could explain to me, with what we're doing here with these resolutions, are we gonna renew all of these resolutions stated by New Hampshire?
We're just gonna add another one.
Well, I wish, and I wish Barrett was here to confirm this, but I would guess, if I'm the New Hampshire School Boards Association, I don't want five different resolutions to say the same thing.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Because what you end up with is a cluttery document. And instead, as, we were talking, talking about strategic planning and being focused.
Yeah.
It's like, zero, let's get in, if, as a school boards association, you can crunch it down to like, these are the 10 things that we're gonna pound on all the time. That's probably where they want to be. So I would guess, I know, and you can see it, the school boards association, the Board of Directors is like, yes, we are fully on board with this as a concept.
We got one already.
Just mechanically, you don't need, we've already got it three times. We don't need it a fourth time.
What's happened in the past is, in 2019, they probably said the exact same thing, and the membership still voted yes.
Anyways, right.
And that's where we're at now. We can add one on for 2022, but I, I mean, I think the board is saying, it's redundant. We already have that position.
Right, right, right.
But that's up to you guys, because you won't be the only one supporting it if you-
Or is it? Because, I mean, it looks like they've done it, you know, three, three separate years. There were renewed sort of statements essentially. I don't know.
I think, I think we need to wrap conversation on this one up. The one thing I would say that I noticed, and just as Nathan had said, that the board cannot introduce legislation, and to me, this was so limiting on a very explicit bill that this school board wanted introduced, that that's, that's not how legislation usually comes about. So I, that was also my, part of why I agreed with the not support. So I think to move forward, Anne, Pip and Hope?
Yeah, I can, I can move my vote to a not support now that I have more information, Carrie.
Okay.
I can too.
And then Anne and Pip?
Yeah, same, same here.
So can I make a motion that we vote to not support Resolution 6?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It feels like you're taking the alternative position by saying not support, and that's probably what has happened in past years.
Yes, guaranteed that's what happened.
Okay, okay, Carrie, thank you. What's the next one?
The next one is Resolution 7, which is around compliance with federal firearms. This one was very split. Five supported it, five did not support it, I'm sorry, five and four. The, the School Board Association recommendation was to not support this. And then this really called for compliance, and I don't know what the most helpful thing is to have up, but I'll just put up the, the-
Number seven.
NHSBI recommendation.
Go up, you're gonna go up, Carrie? Wrong way.
It's long, I know, but-
Well, no, we're talking about number seven, right?
Yeah, that's the wrong one, Carrie.
Yeah, you're on number eight. Go up more.
Oh, oh, yep, you're right.
There it is.
There we go.
And so similar to the other one, the not support was around, the not support was around this other resolution seeming to cover it, although clearly this, the proposed resolution is much more specific.
Thank you.
So the minority was, which, so five people said to support it. Four of us said to not support it, and that was myself, Nancy, Anne, and Brian. And so I'll just say first that my rationale was- Um and so I'll just say first that um my rationale was that these resolutions all sort of read this generic typically um and um that this is something they are very actively advocating for already um in their work and in their reports from Barrett. Um and so I I just didn't think that this was um was specific, it it just is, it seems duplicative to me that it's advocate for legislative action that ensures local school boards comply with it, which they, that just seems like we do. It's not asking for. So then we'll go to Nancy, Anne and Brian.
So I, boy, I would very carefully, I will say, I I believe, just to make sure we're all on the same page, federal law saves schools.
New Hampshire law.
Prohibits, federal law prohibits, um other than, you know, a a a licensed law enforcement. Prohibits firearms, for instance, on campus. And New Hampshire law now precludes the application of or the enforcement of those federal laws in our local properties.
That is correct.
So I think, isn't that the biggest piece of what they're saying is?
Yes.
We should comply with federal because it would be.
Not state.
Yes.
Not state.
Yes.
And I.
And they're being very explicit in it. Whereas NHSBA, while I support the work that I've seen Barrett do on the Hill, their their Board of Directors are not always as explicit and they're in my being up there at times, they have not always been as explicit in their advocacy work towards it as they are not in this current statement that they have on the record.
I I can tell you, I put support because when Lisa and I, as school board reps, attended the vigil in Prescott Park last year, both the mayor and some of our state reps, this came up and how they were determined that the city of Portsmouth was going to take a strong stand. So for me, this felt very political to align with our city and what they're fighting for was a great place for us as a school district to be lockstep. So that's, that was my reasoning.
Um my reasoning for supporting uh was the fact that I think, like what Nathan said, that the request to follow the federal firearms laws and policies is different than what the School Board Association already has because I felt like it was more specific as to what the ask was, so that's why I supported it.
I know, I know you were asking, Carrie, why people didn't support, but I I supported it because I I, again, with Moms Demand Action and other advocacy organizations that that I've seen and been a part of, I I feel like there's much more specific language here that that the NHSBA's current language does not address or they're not necessarily explicitly advocating for, that aligns with our city.
Brian, what was your thinking?
Now makes total sense.
Yeah.
Could I ask Nancy, Anne and Ryan for you to speak to that after the conversation about supporting?
Yeah, I think for me, it was just, it seemed like they already had a resolution. Uh but hearing the specifics that you guys are calling out, I mean, generally I see them as very broad, but um I wouldn't be opposed to supporting something specific either.
I agree. I change my vote and I'll abstain. Anne is abstaining.
Now, I would just say operationally right now, this is a big stressor for for what are we gonna do? And we have an understanding with our local law enforcement that we're gonna do what we need to do to keep kids safe, but that puts us all in legal jeopardy in order to do that. And so um so I appreciate broadly the School Boards Association having something to say, we should be compliant with federal law, but I think there is a need for specificity around this specific thing, which, again, puts law enforcement and the school district in ver- in a very difficult situation where we don't know that we have legal support to do the things we feel we need to do to keep kids safe.
So motion to support resolu- proposed resolution seven?
Seven.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, what's next?
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Carrie.
That was great, Carrie.
Um so I think that the other ones have a, two ways we can do them. But, you know, in general, there was just some um, some not, uh there was a clear majority. Um so we'll go back to two, which is the state assessment of school safety. Um seven of us agreed with the NHSBA recommendation. Um and then two were divergent, Liz recommended supporting and Pip recommended abstaining. So if you two could speak to that.
Yeah, so I I figured that the resolution was more specific um in uh in what the request was for um threat safety and so um I know the the general resolution from the New Hampshire School Board Association talks about prioritizing collaboration and work together, da-da-da-da-da, but this resolution actually goes into a little bit more detail about having um a comprehensive threat assessment and response plans and also um the physical, that there's a physical structure review, recommendations, and that the state of New Hampshire actually dedicate an appropriate amount of funding in addition to funding already provided to assist local school districts in developing, deploying and revising these plans on a regular basis and um and test the protocols for effectiveness. And I just felt like with everything in the country going on and everything that's that's happened, I understand that there's, you know, different protocols out there that, you know, after Sandy Hook, that uh, you know, our police department have worked with and there's, and there's, you know, different ways to go about it, but I really, I support this because of the specific ask to the state to provide these funds and to really um think about this as more of a comprehensive approach that starts, you know, that the state does something as well to help um in that collaboration and uh and assessment. I I assume that, you know, regionally, we have um the CAT vehicles, we have bomb squad, we have a lot of collaboration, but I guess um I support this because I I think it would provide uh greater risk management and tools to our district um and a more of a comprehensive approach to uh prevention.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I just wanna, um while I appreciate.
What?
Just one minute, Carrie, I I just want, thank you. While I, while I appreciate that this resolution is asking for the state to provide funding, I I, unless I am, was reading it incorrectly, I took caution that it's also calling upon the state to develop a plan that would be comprehensive for state public schools. And so that would take, to me, take the authority out of the hands of our local. What's gonna work for Nashville is not gonna work for us. I I feel like it's much more important that our local team has the ability to make the plans that are gonna work for our school district and make it safe.
But do you see that in the resolution? Because it says that to assist local school districts in developing, deploying and revising these plans.
Carrie, just a minute.
So I guess I'm wondering, where do you find that?
I'm trying to tell you just a second. If you go up, I I could have, um I don't have my glasses on, see? But it does say that uh the New Hampshire state in cooperation with New Hampshire School Board Association, New Hampshire Administration, and federal law enforcement to develop a comprehensive threat.
It's there, it's the first piece, right?
Yeah, but it's more.
That the state of New Hampshire develop a manner to test these protocols as well, so that would be, again, the execution would come from the state of New Hampshire, but it was in there, I think, at the beginning.
It's the, it's the first resolved, it says develop a comprehensive threat assessment response plan for New Hampshire public schools. But then it get, does get more specific about providing funds for the schools.
And I appreciate that it gets more specific around the funds, but am I, I I don't, I can't see the whole thing right now.
It's the first resolved is what you're talking about.
Yes.
No, you, that was my reading as well, Hope, that it was letting the state take control of the local threat assessment and the local execution of those plans.
And I have.
And maybe pay for it.
Extreme caution about that. Like, giving funds, great, you wanna provide some funds to our local? You can provide funds all day long, but.
Out the retirement.
Yeah, exactly. Or just fully fund our state education, either one, I would take, please.
I think with with these ones, um these last three, because there was a a clear majority, um I think we maybe can hear from Pip and then see if anyone wants to change their position. Um but otherwise, I think that would be.
We can go with, yeah.
Yeah.
We can go with the majority.
I can respond quickly, yeah. I I didn't mean to suggest that I supported an abstention, I meant I was personally abstaining from responding, from having a position on that. So, but now that I've, now that I think I'm understanding a little bit more, I would be happy to go with the majority.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so does that take care of that one?
So is there a motion? Do we need a motion or?
Do we need a motion to approve that one?
A motion to um not support resolution two.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against?
Aye.
Just one person against, okay. Thank you. And so we're finished, correct?
Oh, there's a couple more.
I thought she said we would.
No, school lunches.
We have two more.
Oh.
And I think maybe um we'll just see, so um four, I think, could be quick. Um it's on no past school lunches and continuing to pursue that. Um Nancy, you were the only not support in that group. There was strong support for that.
I thought I supported that one, I'm sorry.
Uh you went with the NHSBA recommendation.
Oh, 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 I did, I did, you're right, I did, okay.
And they recommended not supporting it, um and I can pull up. Um they um really, their rationale to me was weak, where they just said, we already have eighteen resolutions, we don't want another one. But I think um my sentiment was just that this was really critical during the pandemic and really highlighted how critical this is.
Okay, and um, you know, to be, to to be in agreement with the board, I will change my vote to support.
A motion to support.
A motion to support.
Resolution four.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes.
She's counting or anything. She's not counting or anything.
Getting excited over their project? One more.
Look at how progressive we're being, this is efficient.
Are we under seven minutes?
My style, sorry. Um so the last one is dues the National School Board Association. Um the NHSBA recommendation was to not support, um and seven of us voted to not support. Uh the one support was Liz and the one abstaining was Lisa and Lisa, I don't know, I was thinking you meant you thought our vote should be abstaining, but.
No, I was like Pip, like I don't know the whole backstory and I'm happy to roll with the group on this one.
I'm happy to provide a backstory.
No, thank you.
This is a short, this is a short one. I guess I just. I mean, I, you know, I honestly would prefer that we take no position on this if we're, like, if we're not gonna go one way or the other. I, my, the whole reason why I voted the way I did was obviously this is a national issue. New Hampshire was one of the first people to withdraw from the National School Boards Association without any consideration about how local districts felt about that or what their position was and they kind of took a drastic, they were one of the first ones really to make a drastic move um against the national organization and now they're supposedly joining another organization. And so I guess I would say that if we're gonna pay dues for membership, that whatever national organization we're receiving benefits from or associated with, I would think that we would have some sort of say and it wouldn't just be the New Hampshire School Board Association, you know, handful of folks making the decision one way or the other. So that's why I voted, what did I say, to support it, um because, you know, I think that it, they they really took a drastic stance nationally, you know, nationally and I didn't support that stance initially, so.
Okay, so Liz, you're not, you you prefer not to change your vote?
No, I'm not changing my vote.
Okay. So Carrie, we just keep it the way it is then?
I think it would be if anyone wants to change their vote, um after the break next, if you remember more about that controversy. I I think personally, I just felt like this benefit work alike was sort of that it's still the organization to gather resources from. Um so I guess, does anyone else wanna change their vote?
I mean, I can go with the group on this one.
Okay. I mean, is there ever an opportunity for us to just abstain versus taking a position one way or the other?
Right, but the group.
There is, but right now it's eight to one to not.
I would be content to abstain.
Okay, so we have.
So I'll leave the motion that we not support resolution eight.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Yeah.
Okay, resolution passes.
Paul, that's really gonna be mad that I didn't keep better minutes.
Carrie, Carrie, a week, a week, okay?
Can I just make a point of order um for the minute taker? Who's taking minutes?
Good luck, Nathan.
Paula's.
Paula, Paula, I'm recording.
Okay, never mind. I think with the, with meeting remote, we were supposed to do voice votes for everything, but.
That's true.
Oh, voice, voice votes.
I will email her my position so it's clear she can't hear me on the audio.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
And can you just email that, oh, well, never mind, it's a doc, it's live, forget it.
Thank you, Carrie, that you did a lot of work on this and we all appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Carrie. Thank you also for representing.
Yes, thank you for representing us. Okay, I think we have only one uh item left on the agenda, consideration or approval, oh.
Oh, we didn't, there's a.
Were you gonna say something?
Well, I was gonna say, is one thing we might wanna think about when we're talking about like legislative impact is us being more aware of our ability to proactively offer resolutions to all of the school boards in the, in the state. So this is, this is good, this is a good first step for us to get on and and have someone go and weigh in on behalf of us, but it'd be good in the next cycle for us to be part of that natural legislative kind of cycle and to have have some things from us that we're throwing out to other school boards around the state saying, this is what we think, we'd like you to get on board and support it as a.
When is the next cycle? Is it yearly?
It's always August or due.
Okay, yeah.
So I would say that maybe.
Retreat time.
Retreat or our June meeting, is it, we should put it on the agenda.
Put it on the committee agenda for their legislative committee that we've established, they can spearhead.
Good idea.
Like it.
Okay, consideration approval of ad hoc redistricting committee. We're looking for three volunteers to be on the redistricting committee. Um we already had a interested board member, Anne Walker. Do we have one or two?
When would we meet is the, I mean, I guess is the.
So it's a short term, so really, just to be clear, the the purpose of this ad hoc committee is rather than the whole board kick around all the numbers that NESDEC is gonna release for enrollment and that we have from realtors and we have from our current schools, take a small working group who's gonna look at all the numbers and determine, are we in need of redistricting for next year? So the turnaround time is three weeks. Because NESDEC will release the date, we have our enrollment data, NESDEC is going to release their data in about two weeks. So um very short turnaround time.
Do we do this every year, an ad hoc group, or what is the protocol here?
No, but every year we get those numbers. Every year we get the numbers. We don't have a redistricting committee, this is the first time we've.
I'm sorry, Margaret, so you said it's a three-week commitment two weeks from now?
It's, it's, the, 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 it's, it's, in three weeks, they're gonna report, at the second October meeting, they'll report back to the board and they won't start meeting until that NESDEC numbers come out, which is ideally in two weeks. And it's likely two meetings, one to two, one long meeting or two meetings. We've already done some field work on a lot of the datas and numbers and it's really just making sure we're taking a close look and being intentional about looking at the numbers and asking the questions and looking at the trends to see, it's been kicked around at our meetings for six months now. Do we need to consider redistricting? So the point was, let's really take a hard look at the numbers rather than throw it around and then.
So in serving on that committee, does that, does that automatically keep us from serving on another committee?
No, no, because it's more like a working group.
Okay, then I I'm happy to give my time because I did roll off of some committees.
Well, a bunch of us have our hands up too. Zach has a comment.
Zach has something to say.
I just wanna be really clear about scope. So the purpose. That's why I wanna know, scope. So the scope of this is not, and it's important for the public to really hear this too, because this, you know, um is the, because I think, I think what I, my understanding is from the conversations I've had with leadership is that it's, um, the concern is this has kind of informally been kicked around, like, do we need to redistrict? Maybe we need to redistrict. What do the class sizes look like? Um but but I think, you know, Nancy's experience with. What do the class sizes look like? But I think, you know, Nancy's experience with what, how thorough this community process this was the last time around is, the concern is, let's make sure, I think it's going to be very difficult for the board to have the ability to do the strategic planning process and simultaneously doing a full-scale redistricting conversation simultaneously. So, and I think we've kind of agreed that that might be challenging in the same year. And so it's, well, but, so I think it's, the scope of this is just that group of people looking at, is it clear that it's urgent enough that it has to be changed for the fall? That that should become the kind of the priority, which may or may not affect strategic planning, the strategic planning.
Couldn't also strategic planning.
Incorporate some elements of that.
Inform the process of that?
Probably could. Yeah, yeah.
It's just the timeline issue. If, if, if it's determined we have to redistrict for next year, waiting until the strategic plan ends in June, July is a really tight turnaround for informing families that they.
So we need to have a motion to establish a committee first, and then we can discuss?
No, we don't have to have a motion. We can just establish a committee.
We also wouldn't necessarily have to wait to the full development of a plan to, for it to inform it.
Brian, what would you like to say?
I just want to understand. So let's say this particular committee decides that, yes, this is urgent. That's what it sounds like, urgent or not, right? And then if it is, is that the same committee that's going to be part of that? Or it sounds like it would be a bigger committee formed, right?
Exactly.
If, if it was decided.
Yeah.
So this committee is just going to decide whether we need to redistrict or not, based on the numbers that we have and the facts that we get.
Yep.
Okay. So do we have three volunteers? We have Ann, Hope, Liz. Okay. Margot, would you like to be on this too? You've kind of.
I can share the data, or I can join it. Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Let's, Margot's done a lot of work on this so far, so let's have Margot kind of be involved too. Yeah, you could be the chair of that committee. Okay.
So who, who is on it?
Hope, Liz, Ann, and Margot.
Professional staff will help.
Well, Zach, of course, will have his. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any committee updates?
Oh, no, I'm looking at my phone.
Has anybody gone to a committee meeting?
I'm looking at the agenda too.
I, just a reminder about the new process we're working on with the policy committee. We did meet, and I just want to remind you, we're trying to get the board packets out early so that you have time to read both the policy committee minutes and the policies. If the policy is on there and you don't understand the history of the policy or what the change is, the policy committee would appreciate that you reach out prior to the board meeting so we can iron that out before the board meeting. The board meeting's discussion of policy is really just, do we support the change or do we not support the change? So anything related to why the policy exists or et cetera, if you could channel that to the policy committee members in advance, I think that would lead to a more fruitful conversation of the policy change.
Did you want to say something?
It's, it's a committee that's not listed on the committee list, but it's a citywide committee looking at ARP and ESSER funds utilization. And so I had outreach from, from, from one of our teachers who sits on, on the committee about how the committee was interested in finding out about ESSER process and how maybe the committee could help, you know, give some, some input on how that money should be utilized. And I think what's important, what was clear to me in that conversation, and we've had some dialogue about it, is this that we are in a really tight window around Lister and Community Campus. And we have, I think we've had some conversation on the margins about the fact that we, we might need to not use the ESSER money directly for the, for the, the fit up of Lister. But there's a chunk of the money that might need to be repurposed to other projects so we can free up money to do the fit up for Lister. And so I just want to make sure the board knew that I had communicated back to this representative. I said, I don't know how much ESSER money there is left. So if you guys have grand plans about what you would like to ask us to do with ESSER funds, I'm not sure what, what's going to happen with that because I think there's a chunk of that that is going to be, is going to have to go to Lister fit up if we're going to get it into Lister by the fall. But the board has not decided on those things. We've had some passing conversations about it, and I know Nathan and I are both. So I just want to make sure this stayed on the front burner because the timeline for us to make a decision, to make sure that we're involved in a decision to have the architectural firm do a rework around some stuff and to, and to whether or not we're going to be in the CIP stuff for the, for the city or what's going on with the ESSER funds, the window is really actually pretty short. It's the next, like, month and a half or so for us. Or it might even, it's not even, a month and a half might be generous in terms of what we're talking about.
It's, they're starting to clamor now about getting the design, architectural engineering work done so that then you can get to bid, so get to the street and get bids so that you can actually get the work done before we open school in the fall. CIP launches with the planning, the planning board, they're part of the process of CIP. That launches in October. So, yeah, there's, it's definitely, I mean, I think right now the press, the biggest press has been, has been from the, our friends at the Department of Public Works that are working on the building and are aware of the renovations that we'll need to do and encouraging us, the firm, JSA, that helped us do a space assessment to figure out if everything that Lister needs can fit in the space that we've been, we've been assigned. That architect is actually the architect that designed the building in the first place back in the 90s. It's still on the staff, and we really suggest that we continue to work with him. He's got the insight and can, and work with the staff. So it's kind of a, I know we're all going to do it. We all say we're going to do it. Where the money comes from, we still have to figure out. But we're bucking up against now, really got to just engage that firm so that they can get to work. And we have dollars in capital that we could spend to do that. But I've just been trying to get to a point where there was some, some, some consensus or some agreement that I wasn't going out on my own to, to do this. So.
Do we need a vote to shift funds?
Well, just a consensus. Do we have a consensus that Zach and Nathan can continue to do this so that Lister can get?
Where's Carrie there? Oh, Carrie, did you want to say something?
I, I wanted to say something. If you can come back to me if we go back to the redistricting cover, because this came out of redistricting, right?
No.
No.
No, committees.
Sorry, my audio is not great.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I would support that, that consensus though.
So I, I did have some questions around ESSER funds, and I was hoping that we were going to be getting to that conversation as we're entering the budget. It sounds like maybe we need to have more urgency to that. And I'm happy to, but I don't want, I definitely don't want to get into it tonight. But I'm happy, you know, to send.
Do it in seven minutes.
My questions to you and to you with a copy. But I just, I, I want to put a pin in it. But I do have concerns around, like, we identified some very specific things during COVID that were challenges for us. And I hope we never have another pandemic. But I'm concerned that we are not addressing those things. And ESSER dollars is a chance to do that. So I just want to kind of know, where are we with the dollars? Obviously, this obviously is an important, I'm not saying I don't support that. But I also want to understand a couple of other things that we're pressing.
So I guess, I think, maybe I'll take Zach off the hot seat a little bit, trying to help me, because I've been hitting him up with, like, what can I do? What can I do? Here's, we have, we have a proposal that is before us from this firm that the city has brought to us, the Department of Public Works has, that would commit just under 149,000. I didn't bring it with me. Just under 150,000, which would be architectural engineering design work to, to have billable documents that could go to bid for Lister Academy's use of the Families First space at Community Campus. And the suggestion has been made multiple times now. You need to, you need to, you need to move forward to these guys that have already done the preliminary work for you and did the building, and have them work with the team at Lister to figure out what it is we're going to do with that space so we can get it on the street and get first estimates to really understand the scope of the work and how much money we're talking about, and then get to bid doing it. Financing and whether it comes from this bucket or that bucket, or we put it into the CIP and has to wait for another year, all of that comes later. But we kind of have to do this. And so I think that's where, if there's one thing, I'm not suggesting right now that we need to spend all of the ESSER money or that we need to spend any of the ESSER money. And I agree with you that ESSER is coming. But bigger issue right now is, we won't be spending anything on Lister Academy's work this year if we don't get the design work done upfront. And we have capital dollars I can do it in. And so I probably could have and should have a month ago, just signed it and done it.
Yeah, let's do it.
My God, it felt like we.
No, no. And I think that, but I appreciate, we had this conversation. It was like, well, shouldn't, shouldn't, if we're going to make this type of commitment from the board way in, just to make sure, although we need to do.
So I have no problem supporting it, Nathan. Thank you for explaining.
Just to clarify, you said that they had already gone in and said that we can fit in the space? Or is this going to assess whether we can actually, you had mentioned briefly something about whether we could even fit in the space. So are you saying that they've already preliminarily said, that we've already met all these elements and we're good?
The small dollar agreement that the city financed, that was, I want to say it was on the order of $7,000. And, and this team came and met multiple times with Lister representatives, the staff in full, and they did an inventory of everything you need. You need a science classroom, you need a math classroom, you need, you need an office for this. Oh, my God, Danielle's here. She was in it. I should have, I forget, I forget we have a new, so they've done all of that preliminarily. What do you need conceptually? Don't hold back. Whatever it is you think you might want or need. And they put together a narrative, a narrative assessment. And then the architect went and put reasonably sized rooms and stuff in the space and provided a floor plan, not a proposed floor plan, just a, can it be made to fit safely and reasonably? And I would argue that there was plenty of space for what they need to be accommodated in that space. That's a space needs assessment. And so that's done. Now they want to come back and revisit and figure out what we really need. And, and I, I'm proposing that what they might have to do is they might have to phase the approach. We're going to do all of this, and that's not space we need right now. We might have to wait because it's more money than we can afford. But I don't know that until we get to doing it. So this is just architecture engineering work to get us to the point of being able to say, this is what, what it'll be and what it'll cost.
Is 150 just for Lister? Or is that like a portion of the, the total that the city's paying? Like, are we paying a percentage of the total?
This is a separate proposal they had drafted for just us, for just the space in the lower level of.
Just the design work.
Just the architecture.
So it sounds like you can sign a check and not be alone.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all we're looking to do.
Okay, do we have a consensus?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Zach. Thank you.
So can we put on a future agenda item for the ESSER discussion, please?
Why don't we put that on?
Thank you very much.
Before budget.
Yes, before budget, preferably.
Yes, before, yeah.
Okay. And also on the next agenda, we're having the suicide training, which Ailee Foley is, no, it's not Foley, Marusik, Ailee Foley, Marusik is going to do. And I believe it's about 35 minutes long. Is that correct?
I think so.
Okay, so.
And it will involve our students who have been trained by NAMI.
Yeah. So actually, she'll be supporting. The students will be doing, leading the training.
Thank you. That's correct. Okay. Upcoming events, I, I don't know how, why, but I, it skipped over the announcements and recognitions. And I learned tonight that Oklahoma is the play in this fall at Portsmouth High School. Yes, Lisa?
Sorry, I have a question about the suicide presentation. Is that going to dovetail with the suicide policy coming back to the board?
That's a great question. So part of that is to, is to inform the board so that when we have to sign off on the policy, we're educated on, so that, so, so, so it's a great, the timing, actually, I would like to say we planned it, but we didn't. It worked out nicely. But I, 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 speaking only for myself, I think that training is a great chance for us to put our values into practice, and it'll be recorded. So it's a great resource for our community of access to. Then that gives us the language that we need to understand when the suicide plan comes to us, for us to be able to evaluate, does it makes, does it, does this, to approve a plan that it tags at some of the things we've learned.
And the plan?
Is done, done. We have, we have a done, a finished plan that's got all the essential elements that need to be in the plan. And then obviously, it can be refined or whatever as we go on. But we've got a complete plan.
So maybe we bring it the same night.
Yes. Okay, we can bring that the same night. Okay. Okay, so did everybody hear me? Oklahoma is the fall presentation?
Oh.
So that's very exciting. And I just want to, I want to thank Margot for helping me out so much. Some of you may know I had a medical emergency in my family, which has resolved itself very nicely. But Margot, thank you.
No problem.
She stepped in and just did everything. So thank you.
I'm glad all is well.
Thank you. So with that, does anyone have anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for a wonderful meeting.
You're going to sign, everybody's going to sign that. Nathan, what are we signing here? What is this?
Give me 30 seconds.
What plan? I don't know. Like, what am I putting my name on? I assume it's just something fancy from.
You size one, and then four.
Fantastic. Good for me.
And I gave it to Brian. He still didn't sign it. Looked at it. He saw Pip's signature and thought it was his own.
I guess there's a woman on the board that we weren't close to.
There you go.
I got it.
I know there was one that was on the.
Oh, I didn't.
You're not on this one either. I don't.